It's going to be fast.
Hello, everyone. We will start the meeting now. Tonight is June 14th, City of Edina Planning Commission meeting. Masuka Nager, would you call role?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Stroves.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Louie.
Here.
Chair Everlach.
Here. Thank you very much. So, tonight on our meeting, we have a full agenda. Has everyone had a chance? Any other changes to the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda?
Thank you.
Second.
Move second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda, the next item on the agenda, actually, is approval of the meeting minutes from our May 24, 2017 meetings. Everyone had a chance to review them? Any comments or changes?
I have a comment. I'd like to add, on page five of six, talking about the Astell sketch plan, it says, "A discussion ensued with the acknowledgement of letters from residents, blah, 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 voicing concern." I think it's also important, just for the record, that we put in there that the minutes reflect there were positive comments received as well.
Any further comments? Carrie, does that make sense to you? I think that's correct. Any other comments then? Motion to approve the minutes with that alteration?
Move to approve minutes with changes?
Second.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye, please?
Aye.
All right. Well, that brings us to our public hearings tonight. We have four items for public hearing tonight. The first item is a variance request for 6312 Post Lane. Planner Ocker will speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. This item was heard by you in April, I believe. It is a request for a tear-down rebuild at 6312 Post Lane. The property is located on the south side of Post Lane. It backs up to Arrowhead Lake, as highlighted. This is coming before you because the plans were reviewed by the watershed district. The property is in the Nine Mile Creek watershed district. The original variance was really relating to the required elevation of the basement above the flood elevation. The minimum basement elevation has to be at least two feet above the flood elevation, which then, in turn, affects the first floor elevation. So, the variance was actually for the first floor elevation, because once you raise the basement elevation, if you don't raise the first floor, you end up with a non-conforming height in the basement. So, the original request was approximately three feet to elevate that first floor as a result of the elevation increase of the basement, which was actually then tearing down this home, which is, it's a multi-level home. The first, the house is actually in a hole. It's, the elevation in front of the house is much lower than the homes on either side. This is the house to the left, and you'll see that the front door is actually at the same elevation as the garage doors. It's a multi-level home. The existing basement is four feet lower than the front elevation door. So, the original request was to allow an increase of three feet for that new first floor. The plans that are before you today are exactly the same plans that were approved previously. It's in the same location, provides the same setbacks. It conforms to all of the other requirements, with the exception of the first floor elevation. What they are required to do now, according to the watershed district, is they now have to elevate that basement by three more feet. So, they're requesting a five-foot first-floor height variance, so three feet higher than what had been approved originally. The overall height of the home is still going to conform. You can see on the right, the house, this was the approved plan, and they've had to lower the roof line in order to maintain the conforming overall height requirement. Overall height is measured from averages existing grade, so they couldn't just push the entire house up the way it was designed originally. They had to lower the roof pitch in order to meet the height requirement. So, what is in front of you this evening is basically the same request. However, because of the watershed district rules, they do need to increase that first-floor height. I do have Charlie Gurk here with our engineering department, and he can go into much greater detail about the requirements for the watershed district and why this is necessary. And with that, I will stop and hand it over to Charlie.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Charlie Gurk. I work for the engineering department, and I'm a graduate engineer. Before you, like Chris said, is this redevelopment on Arrowhead Lake. And I guess the reason I was invited here tonight is twofold. One, a little bit of education on flooding and what that means for our city moving forward, different types of floods we look at when we're looking at redevelopment, and then Arrowhead Lake in specific, we'll talk about briefly. But I kind of have a quick agenda I'll go through here. When we're redeveloping in the city, one of the things that our department looks at as part of the plan, whether it's in the planning stages or it's in the building permit stage, we look at the flood elevation for that area. And one of the problems, when you hear the word flood, everyone thinks FEMA. You think Louisiana, you think the coastline, or Minnehaha Creek more locally, or the Mississippi. But that's not the complete story, especially in the city of Edina. In the city of Edina, we hold our own model of flood shapes in the city. We conduct it every five years or so, we revamp it. It's a comprehensive storm-water model. We model our pipes, we model our network, our system, we model areas in the backyards. The whole city's been divided into subwatersheds, and they're all modeled. And so, when we look at redeveloping an area, we have to look, is there a FEMA shape there? Is it covered by the flood insurance program? We have to look at, is there an elevation of a flood elevation that we've modeled, what that elevation is? And then, finally, we have to talk to the watershed district and see, okay. So, we have our own model, and typically, the watershed districts use our model, because we hold it, we're the holders of the model. Nine Mile Creek's a little bit different with the creek itself, because they have a better understanding of it than we do. But both models are held by Bar Engineering, and they tend to be the same employees that are working on those models. So, we have the FEMA shape, we have a local shape, and then we have the watershed shape, which those last two tend to be very overlapping in their elevation. And when we pick an elevation that we're going to look at for determining what we're going to establish the low floor at for a redevelopment, we pick the worst case of those three, or the higher, because sometimes FEMA's model is not the greatest, because it's a very regional approach. While our model is much more localized, and we're remodeling our model currently using Atlas 14 data, as opposed to older HCH model, which is only going to make the elevations change higher, and they're going to be more accurate, especially with the changing type of storms we're seeing in the last 30 years, from a more intense storm as opposed to a longer storm in the past. So, with that, we use the most relevant data, and we look at the elevation of what the low floor needs to be. And the low floor is the basement typically in most homes. FEMA defines the low floor as habitable space or storage space sometimes. You can get into a little bit of a gray zone there, with people wanting to say it's storage. But we don't have the FEMA type of storage that's referred to in FEMA documents, like you would on the coastline, where you have storage underneath a stilted home. So, we almost always refer to the low floor as the basement, or a sport court if it exists. And that low floor, we don't set at the predicted 1% chance elevation. We want some assurance that that's not going to happen, you're not going to flood. So, there's a free board associated with it. And our city code requires two foot of free board, meaning we're going to look at that, model that elevation, and we're going to add two feet to it. So, in the case of this home, when we did the first review, we gave the developer our numbers from the city and the FEMA number, but our number that the city modeled was higher than the FEMA number. So, we gave the developer our number. What we've now learned is Nine Mile Creek has their own rule. It's Rule 4.23 or Rule 4.32, and that rule falls into landlocked basins. And the thing that I didn't know at the time, and I think we had contact at Nine Mile Creek, let them know that this is happening, but for Nine Mile Creek to do a review on a property that's near a water body, it's a very lengthy process. It's not, it's not just a quick cursory glance. It typically involves engineering from the developer's engineer. It can take weeks, if not months. Up until last month, it required board action from them. So, if you were to develop in an area that was near water body within 500 feet, for your plans to be approved, it had to seek board approval, just like we're doing right now, but that would be any permit. So, we always give them the courtesy heads-up. We always ask the developer does, but on these planning commission-type items, it's not as in-depth. On the building permit side, their permit is required to be issued, and I've stated that in our memo. Hopefully, you guys have read that. In order for us to issue a building permit, any other permits that are required by other statutory agencies, such as the watershed, has to be issued as well. So, when, I believe, M.J.L. went to the watershed after they got their variance, they've noted, well, this is a landlocked basin. Arrowhead Lake is a landlocked basin. And some people up here might be asking what a landlocked basin is. If you think of flooding, almost everyone's mind in the city probably goes to Minnehaha Creek or Nine Mile Creek. And the creek rises, we get a really big storm, maybe a couple really big storms back-to-back, the creek rises, the water level rises, but it recedes. As long as we don't get more rain, that level of the water comes back down to its normal level, not quickly enough for the people that live on the creek, but relative to the scheme of things, pretty quickly. When you start talking about landlocked basins, those are areas like Arrowhead Pond, that tend to not have elevations that allow for that pond to overflow to somewhere else before it gets to a critical elevation. In this case, Nine Mile Creek's determined that to be 881.8. We are very conservative with the modeling on landlocked basins, because it doesn't have that reset, there's no piped outlets, there's no way for the water to escape, other than through infiltration and evaporation. And so, you think about, maybe we have a couple small storms, and then we have a okay-sized storm, but we just have storms every single day, and we've all seen this. Every single day we get a storm, that pond level's just going to keep rising. And so, the way Nine Mile Creek handles that is they use a very conservative estimate. And that estimate is typically the worst case of a back-to-back 100-storm, a back-to-back snowmelt, that's typically 100 or 50-year, or the 100-year storm event. And from that number, we've gotten to get to 883.8 for a low floor. And I think the one thing I need to point out here again is, this number for any future redevelopment on Arrowhead Lake is going to be the bare, their minimum. It may change in the future as models get more perfected, but I've identified approximately 10 homes that if they are redeveloped on Arrowhead Lake, they'll need to meet this standard as well. With that said, I guess I can take some questions, if you have any. Hopefully, I was somewhat clear there.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for either staff or the watershed district? Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Charlie. So, what you're saying, then, is based on the feedback that you received from Nine Mile Creek, we are, it's the city of Edina, is going to raise that level?
We have no choice.
Right.
So, our city code currently in Chapter 36 states that we have to have permits issued by other regulatory agencies.
Right.
Before we can issue our building permit. So,
So, you have to match.
Even if that section of code didn't exist, I believe there's statutory language that the watersheds supersede our authority in these types of regulations. So, we really have, we have no choice. Bar Engineering has set the elevation at 830, or sorry, 881.8, which is the flood elevation, and then two feet above that for free board. So, any home that comes in on Arrowhead Lake in the future from now on, and again, we've memorialized this in an appendix to this, to the engineering memo, but this memo is now in every house file address for Arrowhead Lake. So, moving forward, if we do see a variance or a building permit, we'll know that right off the bat, that this is the elevation, and we plan on doing the same for other landlocked bodies of water.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Well, I had a couple. This was an interesting top discussion about the water levels. So, it seems like this year, we're hearing about higher water levels regionally than they've ever been. I mean, does that affect your calculations at all?
Yes and no. Those calculations, if we saw something in the field that didn't match the modeling, you know, we would ask Bar Engineering to study it. We have an extraordinary wet past 365 days. I'm not a hydrologist, not an expert in that field, but I can tell you that we're probably 15 to 20 inches above and beyond where we should be for this time in the last 365 days. And with that said, you know, the flooding that you see on the creek, they can sustain those small storms that come and go and come and go, because the water comes and goes, comes and goes, has an outlet. What we've seen in the past year is where you actually start seeing the real risk for landlocked bodies of water, like Arrowhead Lake, because there is no water for the water to go besides down and up, until it reaches that 882 or 881 elevation. In this case, it would flow out the southwest side into another neighborhood, so causing even greater issues. And when we start to look at these types of issues, you know, there's two solutions. There's the engineered solution, where the city can study it, find a solution by installing pipe, or finding other creative ways to get rid of the water, to put it downstream without causing effects to other people, or we can do smart development. And when we have opportunities to redevelop, like we have in front of us, to make sure that we strongly study it, and we look at it, and we use the most available information to us, the most recent information, and do that smart development. And I guess one of the reasons why I'm here tonight is, you're going to start seeing more of this. With our, we're remodeling the city currently for our stormwater. It's the 2016, 27, somewhere in there model. And I'm forewarning you that this is going to become, especially in the localized flooding area, a more prevalent issue. And we're probably one of the more active communities out there, making sure that we're monitoring ourselves, and not just worrying about the FEMA numbers. But between the 2011 and the 2017 model, there will be differences, and I or Ross Bitner will be up here having the same conversation for other properties in the future.
Thanks. And then, I guess I had a kind of a process question, which is, as I understand it, I mean, the applicant came before us in April, and it was approved, and then, well, we got new data from a new, from a different government agency, and then the applicant had to go back and resubmit. How, that's unfortunate for the applicant. I mean, do we have a process in place, or we looked into future applications to make sure that we don't have to make, I mean, assuming we, you know, we're still going to vote yea or nay on the application, but obviously, that we don't have to review a applicant's, we don't get new data that moots an applicant's existing approval. I mean, do we have processes to make sure that we're hearing from all the government agencies to prevent this from happening?
So, we have, we have that courtesy review with the watersheds. And I think if you ask Nine Mile Creek and Minnehaha Creek if we have a good relationship, I think they would say we do. We definitely reach out to them when not only the building permits come in, but the planning review permits come in, or the planning commission action comes in. I'm not quite sure what happened here. You know, in the three years I've worked for the city of Edina, this is the first time I've seen an instance of this, where a home is proposed for redevelopment in a landlocked body of water in Nine Mile Creek. And what can get somewhat confusing here is, if you had the exact same home, and you moved it three miles northeast to Minnehaha Creek watershed, we wouldn't be having this conversation. The city standard is lower than Nine Mile Creek's, but because they supersede our authority, and not only in our code, but I think at state statute-wise, we have to, we kind of have to bend the knee to them, right? With that said, you know, it's always a shame that something like this happens. And I've had conversations with Nine Mile Creek, with their engineer and with their administrator, and we will definitely do our best to make sure that this doesn't fall through the cracks again like this. And I know, I know Mike, he's sitting behind me, he contacted Nine Mile Creek, and I'm sure this is, if this is the first time I've seen in three years, and the second time I've seen a Nine Mile Creek application have any flood risk to it, I'm sure that they don't see it very often either, and they were probably, probably a little bit taken back by it, too. But sometimes, when you dig into the details, you know, you get the quick review from Nine Mile Creek or from us. Someone's calling, asking, about inquiring, about buying a property, we give them, we give them an okay review, but we don't dig into the very deep details of the lot, because we don't know what you're proposing. And their proposal could change tomorrow, or it could change the next day in Nine Mile Creek's mind. So, I think we have a process in place, and we'll keep on improving it. And like I said, if you were to ask Nine Mile Creek, they would probably say we have a very good relationship.
Thank you. Commissioner Hamilton.
I don't know if you're the right person to ask this. It seems like that Arrowhead Lake is a natural attribute that's, that's good for everybody. We're glad it's there. It's lovely. People are glad they have their houses around it. And yet, maybe to get right to the point, in order for this basement level to come in where it needs to, the whole house has to come up, so it has to sit on fill that isn't there.
Well, the basement's currently at this elevation. If you look at the existing survey, it's at or very close to the 883.8. It might be at like 883.1, but because the home is a split level, and the way we measure first-floor elevation, that's why we're here tonight.
Okay. And so, you have to bring in fill?
I don't believe there's a lot of fill for this property.
Right.
I think the biggest change you'll see, you'll see some fill for the driveway and to the garage, but Mike probably knows better than I do, since he's more intimate with the project. But from my recollection, there's not a lot of fill for this lot. But for, to continue down your thought there, you will see that on some of these other ones that may come in on Arrowhead.
My concern is, A, that the homeowner understands that, and B, that the engineering, the surcharge for that fill.
Yeah, and that's
Whatever's underneath it is an enormous load, and the settlement that it can cause is
Yep. And that's, that's addressed during the building permit process. The building official can require additional testing and engineering for that type of thing. Yes.
Thank you.
To be honest, I, in the three years I've been here, I haven't seen many homes besides maybe Greg Jennings' home that had a lot of fill. And that was a very similar circumstance to this, where we required the first floor to go up, because the bottom floor had to go up.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions for staff? Would the applicant like to speak? I assume the applicant has a chance if they'd like.
Thank you, commissioners.
Seeing no rush to the podium, I'm going to assume, oh wait, here comes the applicant. Please state your name and address, and then record here for you.
Yeah, my name is Mike Lindor with M.J.L. Homes, and I am the general contractor that's trying to build this house. And to touch briefly, why I'm back in front of you for the second time, is that when I applied for the building permit after our variance that we approved in April, I applied at the same time with Nine Mile Watershed District. And we were, that, that whole process was happening at the same time, excuse me, at the same time as the building permit. But then, at the very end, the 23rd hour, when everything was getting ready to be approved by both sides, their engineer came up and said, "Oh, by the way, there is no outlet to this lake." And he says, "Now, we need to use these numbers, and you need to bring that house up three and a half more feet, which would allow two back-to-back 100-year floods to happen without, you know, having a basement flood." So, that, that's why we're here. And, and I think going forward with any of your other applicants, I'm sure this will never probably happen again on Arrowhead Lake, because we kind of made it a big deal, and why we waited this long to, you know, share this information. But, you know, it was just an honest mistake, I think, on Bob Olmeyer's part, and he's the engineer for Bar Engineering. So, I think going forward, I think you should, won't have this issue again. And as far as fill, if you want to touch on that a little bit, I don't anticipate any fill for compaction or anything under the footings. The only kind of fill I would be using would be the backfill, because of the house being up, you know, backfilling on the outside. But any, any requirements that the city will require when I, when I do start building, we will have engineering out there, instant testing to make sure that any and everything is within standards.
Well, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Lee.
It appears that you were able to compensate and keep the roof height more or less the same. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. The overall height is met, yeah.
Okay. How, can you talk a little bit how you accomplished that? Did it affect the interior spaces, or did you take out anything in the ceiling, change the trusses?
Yeah. It went from a 1012 to a 712, which the client prefers, you know, the 1012, but I mean, they also prefer to build on Arrowhead Lake, too. So, so they made, you know, they compromised a little bit on that.
Yeah.
Because I knew that was a big one, you know. Like Chris was saying earlier, she says, you know, instead of trying to go for two variances, you got a better chance of maybe getting
Well, that was going to be my point. I appreciate the fact that you tried to do that, because I think a lot of other developers would say, hey, same, same house, same plans, it's not our fault, you know, and we want this. But I also think it's a very good exercise in showing that there are so many new houses with gigantic roofs, and sometimes we understand that, oh, you have to have that, because they want that high ceiling on the third floor, whatever it is. In fact, you don't even have to touch the interior. It really is all just roof space. So, as we try to be a little more environmentally conscious, talking about heating our homes and all that extra attic space, so that's something to consider, especially if it bears on other neighbors who say, does it have to be that tall? Maybe it doesn't. So, just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for the applicant? Well, thank you. If anything comes up, I'll let you know. I guess, thank you. As you mentioned earlier, this is one of our public hearings tonight, so if anyone in the audience would like to speak about this matter, please come up. You'll have three minutes to... I'm not even seeing any eyes looking that direction. So, any motion to, if you close the public hearing?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second, motion and a second. All in favor say aye. And that means it's a planning commission discussion. Is there any discussion among the members? Commissioner Stroves?
No, I would like to commend city staff. I think, I mean, we commented the process wasn't exactly how we would want it to go, but I think they were candid. I think they got it right. And the work that they did, the issue to me would have been the change in elevation, and that got worked through. So, I think they, they did a very nice job, adapting to the situation. And I liked the candidness and the idea that this was a learning issue, and, and people won't forget. So, that's all. Thanks.
Thanks, Carrie. Any other comments by Commissioner Bennett?
I'd also like to echo the same exact thing you said. And, and just having the staff be here and kind of explain with their own information was helpful for not just us, but whoever's watching and in attendance. And then also commend, like Susan said, to the commissioner for, or the applicant, and just for bringing that roof line down, and seeing the change in design, that, that wasn't expected, and that's something we really appreciate.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Any further discussion, or does anyone want to make a motion, or?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Can we do this by voice vote? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Nay? Hearing no nays. Motion's approved. Thank you. Our second matter this evening is another public hearing. It's a setback variance at 5261 Lockloy Drive for a house addition. And appearing for the city is Planner Ocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. This is a request for side-yard setback variance at 5261 Lockloy. The property is highlighted right here. It's a single-family home. It's a rambler with a two-car attached garage. It's located on the west side of Lockloy and does back up to Dun Craig, so it is a through lot. These are examples of other homes in the neighborhood that have larger garages than the subject property. There are a number of three-plus garage There are a number of three-plus garages throughout the neighborhood. The request is to accomplish a third garage stall. This is a survey of the property as it exists today. What you'll notice is a very large lot, however, the house was built relatively close to the south lot line. There's lots of space to the north, that's not where the garage is located, it just happens to be towards the south portion of the home. This is a site plan illustrating what they are proposing to do. They are proposing to add on to the back of the home as well as an additional garage stall beside the existing garage that's on the south side of the home. This gray triangular area is the overlap into the minimum 10-foot side yard setback. The rest of the additions to the home and improvements meet the ordinance requirements. What you'll notice from this drawing is that there is almost a 54-foot distance between the proposed improvement and the corner of the home that's directly south. So there's quite a bit of distance between the homes, even with that new addition. And also, it's just a triangular portion of the addition that's proposed to be closer than the 10 feet. It'll be a little over four and a half feet away from the south lot line, I'm sorry, four and a half foot overlap with a five and a half foot setback. A number of years ago, the minimum side yard setback for garages in any size lot was five feet, and I think the property owners were aware of that and they had plans on adding on to their house. Unfortunately, they didn't do it soon enough. Our ordinance has changed since a few years ago, and the minimum setback, regardless of whether it's a garage or living space, is now 10 feet. This is the tree plan, they do plan on removing a tree that's adjacent to the addition, which does not require replacement because it's within the circumference. They also are going to be removing a, a tree in the front yard. They are, however, proposing to replace both trees with two oak trees in the front yard. So they will be replacing the tree that technically they wouldn't have to replace. So this is the basement floor plan, showing in darker grays the addition off the back, which meets the ordinance requirements, and then the slab that's above, you can see the triangular portion that's overlapping into the setback. The house sidewall is not square with the side lot line, so you have this triangular overlap, it's a point intrusion at the front corner into that setback area. And this gives you a little better idea on that main floor plan, just how much of an overlap there is. As you get to the back corner of that proposed garage, it does maintain the minimum 10-foot setback. So there, there are a few challenges with the lot, the fact that the house isn't centered on the lot, the fact that it's much closer to the south lot line, the fact that the garage is located towards the south, and to add on to it, then you are getting closer to that south lot line, there isn't as much space to work with. And also that there is quite a bit of spacing between the two homes. And then you see the roof line, the new roof, again, with that triangular overlap. And then the new elevation of the home, showing that additional 10-foot wide garage stall, which is rather minimal, and the elevation to the south that would be adjacent to the neighbor. All of the finished materials will match the existing materials that are there currently. And then the photograph above is the existing conditions, and then below, you'll see that there's this additional garage stall, gives you an idea of what the spacing is between the two. There are a number of three-car garages throughout the neighborhood, this isn't uncommon within the neighborhood. Staff does recommend approval of the variance. The property with the addition of the garage width and the request to deviate from side yard setback is a reasonable use of the property, given the neighborhood conditions, and also given the challenges with trying to add on to that garage and the location where the house was originally built. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions for staff? No, would the applicant like to speak about this? Just please state your name and address, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Hello, my name's Bob McElveen, and my address is 5261 Lockloy Drive. My wife, Ellen Jones, in the audience, and our architect, Angie Taffey. I'd just like to thank the commission for considering our application and entertain any questions you may have of me.
Short and sweet. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Hobbs.
Mr. McElveen, did you get any, or have any contact with the neighbor to the south and their opinion?
Yes, so the neighbor to the south, the home closest to the proposed setback variance, did include a letter supporting our application.
Thank you.
That should be in the packet.
Yes, that, that is correct. That is-
The casing.
Approximately the, what, the seventh page or the fourth? Commissioner Lee.
I just want to thank you for what I think is a very excellent packet of information here. I think the, especially the roof plan, is one of the best I've seen. Reason it's, it actually has notes talking about downspout locations and which gutters are going to remain. So I think when you get an architect involved, we have all the information we need. I appreciate also the stormwater management diagram. Obviously, in your case, it's a very minor addition, but some of these other plans we see, we receive these plans, but the, the indication of the arrows on it showing the direction of the water flow is always comforting to see that and understand exactly what's the intent after the, the building is done, how the water actually will flow. So I was going to say it was very helpful also to have, already have approached your neighbor, and it makes it much easier. Obviously, we don't base our decisions on that, but the, it begs the question, you know, obviously, your, your variance is for very little, but when you look at it overall, it's really, you're adding a new one-car garage, and that, that will change the appearance of the house mostly for the neighbor to your south. So it was very, very good that you approached them and explained what was going on.
Good, thanks. And your, your thanks for the quality of the design should go to Mark Larson and Angie Taffey of Ray Camp Larson, they did an excellent job. As for the stormwater drainage, when Lockloy Drive was reconstructed a few years ago, the city put in a stormwater pipe, I don't know what you call it, that is there to collect stormwater for those who tie into it. I appreciate that being there because we, we tied into it at the time on the north side of our house, in an area of the yard that was always wet. We put a surface drain in there and our downspouts drain into that system and solved our, our damp yard problem at that time. We'll be tying in on the south side with this project.
Thank you. Commissioner Berube.
The other thing I want to comment on is I'm really pleased you're going to add the two trees, and I guess it's not required, you know, you're, you're losing one tree and I guess taking out another one, but you're going to add two new ones, so I applaud you for that. Thanks for doing that.
Sure, we, we love trees, as you can see from our tree plan. The one that is marked in the front yard as being removed, that actually died and we already took it out. That was not removed because of the project.
Any further questions for the applicant? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing. If anyone else would like to speak, please come forward. You'll have three minutes, just ask you to state your name and address. Okay.
Move to close public hearing?
Thank you.
Second.
A motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Back to the Planning Commission. Commissioner Lee, would you like to start our discussion?
Oh, well, actually, I was just going to make a motion, but-
Please do.
Any other comments? Okay, I would like to move that we accept staff's recommendation to approve the variance based on staff's findings.
Sir.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is passed. Any, any nays? I saw them, didn't see any, saw them, I didn't think, but, motion passed? Good luck with the city council.
Our third public hearing tonight is a rezoning zoning ordinance amendment for 5109 to 5125 West 49th Street for the Great Oaks Development and TE Miller Development. And now pitching is Planner Teague.
All right, thank you Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Here it is, looking for the clicker. Before you, as mentioned, a zoning ordinance amendment to an existing PUD, the PUD 5 zoning district, which was an approval a few years back for a townhome development that was never developed. This property is located just off the off-ramp, coming off of Highway 100 across the bridge here from City Hall along Vernon. Here's a look at the existing properties. It's made up of a single-family home and a couple of apartment buildings. There's a look at the existing single-family home, one of the apartment buildings, and the second apartment building. So there's 10 units on this site total. So as I mentioned, back in 2013, the city approved a comprehensive plan amendment to guide this site for medium-density development. Medium-density is defined up to 12 units an acre in our comprehensive plan. There was a rezoning to that PUD 5 zoning district, and this specific plan that's on the screen was the plan that was attached to that PUD 5 zoning. It included 16 townhome units, as you can see, with access off of 49th Street, attached townhome units. There was also a pedestrian connection that was part of the justification of the PUD, was providing a pedestrian outlet up to Vernon to connect up to the Grand View District, kind of that moving, moving residents to the north through the site. Goes along with our Southdale development principles that we've been considering, how a property fits into the neighborhood and how you can get people through a project. So this project was approved, rezoned with that comprehensive plan amendment, but unfortunately, it was never built. Some of the details, they, they needed to sell 12 units before they built one, they weren't able to sell any. So the project before you is a completely new applicant. This is a look at those plans that were approved. It was going to be a two-and-a-half-story, flat-roof development. So again, this request before you is the zoning ordinance amendment to attach a new, new development plan to that zoning district. So this is preliminary site plan review, and there's also a preliminary plat that goes along with it. You may recall a few months back, they did come through with a sketch plan review. The proposal at that time was for 27 units, and you can see it was to be made up of, of two condo or townhome buildings. There was quite a prominent green space in the middle with this pedestrian connection through and up to Vernon Avenue. This is a quick rendering of what that looks like. Oh, sure. So, sorry. See the, the existing or the proposed at the sketch plan at that time? It's a three-and-a-half-story building. You can see the, there's an existing single-family home adjacent to the site. So they have made a number of revisions from that sketch plan review. They've reduced the number, so with that sketch plan review, they needed a comprehensive plan amendment to go to high density because that exceeded our 12 units an acre requirement. So they have reduced the number of units by 10 to fit with our existing comprehensive plan density maximum. So this proposal is for 17 units. Part of the, the concern with Planning Commission and City Council was the impact on that single-family home to the east. So they've shifted that slightly away from that single-family home. They've eliminated one of the, one of the two buildings and replaced them with detached units. They have eliminated the, that pedestrian connection through the site, and that's due to the sound wall that's been constructed since that time. So quite a dramatic change from what we were considering before. We knew that sound wall was coming, we just didn't quite realize the height, scale, mass of it. That said, MINDOT has said we could cut an opening into that door, provide a door to, so we could still provide that connection, it's just not the most friendly space in doing that. So here's a look at the site plan that's proposed. You can see we still have the 12, a 12-unit building on the east side, and with the, or detached units on the west side. Would be access provided to the townhome off of 49th Street, and then access to the, the separated units through a private drive that would come in, in the middle of the site. So I'll just quickly show you some elevations, the applicant will go through this in more detail, but you can see the buildings as proposed. You can see the sound wall on the south, along the south lot line. So the buildings would just stick up above the sound wall. A view from 49th, looking into the project. There's a view from 49th where you can see the, the nearest single-family home. A view to the north across 49th. And a view looking to the east on 49th. So in review of the, the site plan itself, again, the applicant is suggesting that they would not like to make that pedestrian connection due to the sound wall. Staff is still, as you've noted in the engineering memo, we're still recommending that that connection be made. Could be made off of the private drive and through the, through the sound wall somehow. Do you want to bring to your attention, so the Vernon Bridge across, that's above the railroad tracks, is scheduled to be rebuilt in the near future? So there may be an opportunity to widen that bridge and provide a sidewalk in this area. So we really believe that that sidewalk connection is still important, and with any approval, we would still recommend that, that that pedestrian connection be made. So we, we offer that as a recommendation that can be. The applicant will state their reasons for not doing it, so that'll be a topic of discussion for the, for the Planning Commission. Again, you can see the sidewalk that was proposed with the original plan from 2013. A traffic study was done by Winkin Associates back in 2013, they've since updated that study, and I'm not sure if Ed Terhar from Wink, he is on his way, I didn't see him in the audience, but he will be here to answer any questions that you may have. But the study in 2013 and the update have concluded that there's really an addition of seven units to the site. There's really no impact to the, to the roadway system, no, no recommendations or requirements to upgrade the system. They did note that a flashing yellow would help the existing condition at the, at the Vernon Interlock and intersection. That's something that staff will work with the county to accomplish that, but that wouldn't be a condition that would be tied to this project. That's just something that we will work on in the future. In terms of landscaping, they do exceed our landscaping requirements, over double the number of trees that would be required. To address that issue of the impact on the single-family home that's located here, they're proposing 12- to 18-foot evergreen trees along the south lot line, Black Hill Spruce, and this larger one is a white pine. And again, they've, they've angled that. City engineers reviewed the, the grading plan and found them to be acceptable. They are proposing a preliminary plat, so because there are seven new units, there would be required park dedication above the number of units that are there, so that park dedication would be $35,000 due at the time of release of the final plat. In terms of the comparison of the existing setbacks that, not the existing, or the, the standards that were set with that project in 2013, as noted on the screen here, the setbacks are closer to the lot lines with this project. The, the building is taller, this is 54-foot tall. Those previous plans were for a 35-foot building. The building coverage is also increased. In looking at the setbacks, the 49th Street right-of-way is, is larger than we typically see, so there is quite a bit of green space despite that 14-foot setback along, along So the impact from the street isn't as great despite that, that low number because of the, because of the large right-of-way. Also, along the west lot line, it's adjacent to the railroad tracks, so there's not much impact there. And again, the- And again, the buildings are closer to Vernon, but given that sound wall, staff is comfortable with that setback as well. And again, they have shifted the building to the west to, again, try to minimize those So primary issue for consideration is this proposed amendment to the existing PUD reasonable for the site. Staff believes that it is. The proposal continues to meet the PUD criteria, creates for a more efficient and creative use of the property. Again, it would provide a better connection to Vernon and to the Grand View District with the inclusion of that sidewalk. Parking is all internal to the site, underground parking under the 12-unit building, two parking spaces per unit. Again, the enhanced landscaping, and through the PUD, we're assured that this would be the project that's built. The proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan with that reduction in the density. And again, as I mentioned, staff is comfortable with the setbacks and the standards. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the amendment to the zoning ordinance, subject to the findings and conditions that are in your staff report. And with that, I can stand for any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Planner Teague? Commissioner Lee.
Carrie, could you pull up that, one of those aerials? I just, I'm curious where, if you could point out where that sound wall ends right now.
Yeah, it ends right about at the lot line.
Okay, so is it still possible to have a sidewalk come up to link 49th somewhere along there? Or is that because that's the bridge, actually? There's no way to link to it anymore, right?
Right. Yep. The bridge starts essentially right.
It literally comes to right to the end, the beginning of the bridge.
It does.
Okay. All right, you, let me see here, you had mentioned in the report that on the new site plan, or the proposed site plan, that the building was tilted a little bit away on the east? So it used to be straight with the lot line when it was the first sketch concept, right? And so that's what you mean by pulling away?
Correct. It was 25-foot setback at sketch plan, it's 30 now with that tilt.
Okay. And then, when you were talking about sort of our compliance table, you had mentioned the previous building, maybe, I don't know if you meant that, was 35 feet, whereas this is going to be more 54 feet. Previous building? Or did you just mean that's the city standard on the building?
That was the proposed setback with this project.
Oh, that project.
Yep.
Okay.
That's where that 35 comes in.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all I had for now.
Any further questions for Planner Teague? Commissioner Bennett.
I think the applicant will be able to kind of address most of my questions, but one I had, could you speak maybe to how this site is envisioned to fit into the Grand View plan, or the framework as it stands?
Yeah, so this site wasn't included in the Grand View study specifically, but just being that it is the perception of the first development that occurs there, we thought that pedestrian connection would be an important, so it feels part of the district. So I think that's what we were trying to achieve here, so it does feel part of the district and not isolated, because there is limited access in and out of this neighborhood.
Was this included in the TIF district of Grand View?
You know, I'm not sure if this was. My guess would be it's not.
I have a few questions, Carrie, and one for the traffic. I'll start with, I'll save the traffic for last. Looking high and low for support. Well, we'll save that one for last. First of all, with the setback on 49th Street, I understand your reasoning for the setbacks on the, near the train, and for the setback near the sound wall. But for the setback on 49th Street, I understand also your reasoning as to why there's such a bigger boulevard in that neighborhood. But that's kind of a fully unique feature of that neighborhood in that it has kind of what I would call more of a pastoral or a southern type of boulevard than, different from elsewhere in Edina. I'm wondering if that would be a reason to waive the setbacks, because every other house in that neighborhood still has the regular setbacks in addition to the larger boulevard area. In the immediate vicinity of this structure, what kind of setbacks are on the house and will this, on those houses, and will this setback of 15 feet from 49th Street, will that be significantly different from the other neighbors?
There's no doubt it would be closer, it would be the closest structure to the house. So you can see from the graphic here, relatively short street as it turns to the north. You can see the single-family home located here is a little closer to the street than our code. It wouldn't be as close as proposed here. You can kind of see its location here. So there's no doubt that this structure would be the closest building on the street on this block.
Yeah, I hate to give up that setback and that neighborhood feel that they have over there. Struggle with that a little bit. The sidewalk, could you go into a little bit more, your thoughts of what the sidewalk could be? And in particular, could you discuss the number of steps that you think will be required to bring it up to Vernon, and any kind of ideas as to the volume of usage?
Yeah, I don't know the specifics of the number of steps. You can see in the plan here, there were a series of steps planned, you know, they were kind of scattered throughout, some here, then as you got closer up to the street. So steps were contemplated back then. What that would take, I don't know that answer specifically. The city engineer was suggesting potentially connecting somehow off of this, the existing roadway, or the proposed roadway, to make that connection somewhere on the back of the wall, to bring that up. But how that exactly happens, we would leave that to the applicant to revise their plans to accommodate.
And so essentially, what the steps would take people up, if they go through the wall, then they would be on the sidewalk on Vernon.
Correct.
And so they'd have to walk probably to their, most of them would walk to the west towards Jerry's probably. Probably wouldn't be too many walking to the east over Highway 100.
Unless they came to a City Hall meeting up here for Planning Commission or Council? But yes, most would go to the west.
All right. And then, thank you, and then regarding the traffic, I saw some numbers regarding, you know, the AM/PM traffic from Brookside onto Interlock and going south on Interlock. And I didn't necessarily, it sounds like that's considered bad. I didn't necessarily see some time. It sounds like regardless of what those numbers are, the idea is the impact of this project on that is fairly minimal, isn't it? It's whatever level it is today will be the level it is tomorrow, right?
Correct. Yeah, we're just adding seven additional housing units.
One thing, that is a concerning intersection, having been there one day. Separate from the numbers, is there an idea of what the weight is? Because I suspect that if you're on Brookside and you wish to go south on Interlock and say towards the Liquor Store or Devani's or something, you can be stuck on Brookside for a long time. Is that everyone's understanding?
That's my understanding.
You know, so what do people do? Do people, I mean, I'll tell you what I did. I just turned her on, went to 44th, went under the bridge, and went under the, I mean, that's just reload routing traffic through neighborhoods. Is that?
That would be one option, or you wait it out.
Wow.
Mr. Terhard thought he'd be here by 8:00, so I would anticipate as we get into it, he'll be, he'll be here.
All right. Well, I don't, yeah, if anything we can do to improve that, it'd be great. Any further questions for staff?
My, I just am concerned about the traffic as well, because I have waited there and oftentimes forget that I don't want to be there during certain hours because you do get stuck. But were you saying, did you say you'd put a yellow flashing light? Was that there?
No, so it seems to be, oh, he's here. All right, I'll let Ed answer the traffic.
Okay. So maybe you're talking about a different spot for the yellow flashing light? Because I'm not sure how that makes any difference.
At Interlock and Vernon?
Okay.
Well, with Mr. Terhard here, well, why don't, don't rest, come on up. Maybe traffic held you?
No, traffic did not hold me up. There was no traffic here on the way here. I had a previous commitment. So, my name is Ed Terhard, I'm a traffic engineer with Wink Associates, and I completed the traffic study, and I'm welcome to, here to answer questions that you may have.
Well, so far, there've been two questions. I asked a question about what do you think can be done regarding people on Brookside that want to go south on Interlock? And it sounds like that this development wouldn't necessarily have much impact on that anyways.
Right.
But what do you thought could be done? And then Commissioner Barubi was also asking, you know, she saw in a herd about a flashing yellow light, and if you could just explain how you, the impact you think that might have.
Sure. So you are correct in your statement that this development itself doesn't add a lot of traffic, a net amount of traffic because of the apartments that are already there, and then the traffic that this would generate, they almost balance each other out. But you do make a comment that there is an existing issue at Brookside and Interlock. And it's kind of a combination of Interlocking being used for a lot of through-traffic, you know, traffic that does, is entering or exiting this area of Edina. It's a nice connector into Hopkins ultimately, into that area. So it is used heavily for that. And when you're coming southbound, you do run into Vernon, there's a signal there. And basically, what happens is there's enough traffic on Vernon, especially in the afternoon, not so much in the morning, but especially in the afternoon, that traffic does back up on Interlock, and it backs up past Brookside. And I was there, I watched traffic for quite a while, and we also have video of that intersection. And people need to take turns, basically, they wait for an opening in the queue. If someone lets them in, they'll go, otherwise they have to wait a while, and it's a congested area. So I did run a couple of scenarios at the Vernon and Interlock and intersection where, with some traffic signal improvements. You've maybe seen at some intersections now where they have the flashing yellow arrow on a left turn. It's a kind of a combination or a hybrid of a, what used to be called a protected permissive, where you'd start with the green arrow and then go to a green ball, or just a green arrow. Some intersections just have a green arrow, or a red, you know, a green-yellow-red arrow, and you can't go unless it's a green arrow. It's kind of a hybrid in between there. Where there's a flashing yellow arrow, you still have to yield, but it operates a little more efficiently at certain locations for left turns. And I ran in the analysis software, I looked at a couple options where if we were to add those at this particular intersection, there's the opportunity to reduce that queue, that southbound queue up to Vernon. Now, like we said, it's not really being driven by this development, it's really an existing issue. And also, there were some, I reviewed the Grand View District traffic study, there were some recommendations in there as this area develops, that this is kind of a important intersection. And it's going to be, there are some congestion issues that could occur as this area develops and redevelops. So I think this intersection will be something that should be looked at as this area develops, and some discussions with city staff, county staff, to see if there are improvements that can be made at that intersection. So that's really what we came up with, and that's something that I would, I would recommend is continued to be looked at for this area.
My first comment, thank you for being here and speaking to that. And I guess I'd like to say first off, kind of what was mentioned is, as important as that discussion is, it truly has no bearing on this project, at least from what I see. I do live right down and on Interlock, and so I go through those intersections all the time. And I'm glad you mentioned the Grand View traffic study. I feel like this is not the time for it, but a discussion needs to happen about what has to happen with that intersection, because there is, I guess, ideas that Vernon in that area would shift to a one-lane kind of road with boulevards, bike lanes, and more protected amenities to allow neighbors like me and other people to get to Grand View besides driving. So when you do that, you're shrinking, you know, the need. So I think of a flashing yellow as only a Band-Aid, that may or may not be worth it if we're going to talk about kind of overhauling that. Things that come to mind are, you know, that bridge is really close to that intersection, so we need to, as a commission, as a city, just be really cognizant that this is a huge overarching, one thing affects a lot of other things, because there could be an opportunity for a roundabout there, or something that just can, provides continual throughput. But we're talking about a bridge coming that, you know, that, all this stuff needs to kind of be factored in, and I think we have a great opportunity as a community to really readdress that area, because that is kind of the gateway to Grand View. How this project does fit into that, I believe, is as Vernon changes, as that intersection changes, and maybe this is more for the applicant, I do believe a pedestrian connection is more than necessary and what we'd want to see, so as that road kind of changes. But how did your study compare to what they did in the Grand View study? Was theirs more comprehensive and over-holistic?
It covered, yeah, it covered a larger area, and I think looked a little farther into the future for redevelopment. Ours obviously is more focused on the north, the north side of the intersection and the impacts of this development. But I agree with you that you need to have a longer-term vision probably for this location because it's so close to the bridge, and there are limitations, and if there are opportunities to move it, or roundabout, or, you know, those kinds of things. That's what issues like this should spur, is long-term, longer-term thoughts like that. And I agree with you completely.
So yeah, I mean, bless it, thank you for being here, because maybe that could, you know, since this doesn't have an impact, it's not necessary for you to be here, but I'm glad you are to speak to it so we can all think about it now. Thanks a lot.
Yep.
Any further questions for staff or the traffic? Well, thank you, Mr. Terhard. Would the applicant like to speak about this? Please state your name and address, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Rob Miller with TE Miller Development. My address is 300 Prairie Center Drive, Eden Prairie, 55344. My firm, TE Miller Development, is the developer on this project, along with my partners at Great Oaks, Ed Briesmeister, Tom Dillon, and Tom Thralkelb. And I just wanted to come up and introduce myself, and also introduce the project architect, Dan Yunesco, from DAP, who will be presenting the project. And after Dan, our landscape architect, Jason Anny will also come up and speak as well. So Dan, why don't you come on up here, and I will, I'll get the media stuff ready for you.
Good evening, my name is Dan Yunesco, I'm an architect and town planner. And this is first time in Edina, but not first time in Minneapolis area. I worked in this area for about the last 10 years on various other projects. About a year ago, we came here at the town of Edina, and we met with Kerry and his colleagues, and we started the process of designing this project. And I want to tell you over the bat that Mr. Kerry Teague and Mr. Chad Milner have been very supportive, very helpful to our efforts through all these changes. When we started, we really embraced the concept of the connection between the neighborhood and the south side. We do believe in having continuity and many interactions between various neighborhoods and not creating borders. And we really loved, and we made actually a promenade, a main element on our development originally, the promenade between our buildings to take you beautifully to the bridge, and then to the intersection of Interlock and Vernon. As we move through the process... As we moved through the process and together with Mr. Teague and Mr. Milner learned more and more and then we saw what was built there was, I would say, a major surprise for us. We did not know that the wall is going to be so significant. And when you design towns, you see, it's important to, to some, I'm a contextual architect. I respect the place where I go. I love to do things that are absolutely connected with everything around as if they have been there 100 years. And that was my intent and I knew that we need to eliminate a connection, we made the big connection, and then I got the wall. As a professional, I need to address it properly and face reality. And I have a presentation for the project, but I want to suggest something. I'm changing my mind on the run. Mr. Kerry Teague did a very nice presentation. I will repeat his presentation with more details. I'll be happy to do it. But actually, I have another presentation that I was ready to show it to you if you really want it, but as I see the subject around the planning commission tonight, we need to go and see it because honestly, I was so surprised about this imposing wall that I decided to study the area. Remember, I'm a town planner too and I've run many places in the world like this. And Mr. Chad Milner was extremely helpful because he gave me your drawings regarding that traffic study that you did. I think that you may have meant to the thousand, you had a vision of the future. I have to tell you, very good package. And then I took what we do and I tried to integrate and offer solutions, how to do it, if you want to see that. I'll be happy to do anything you want, to give you just more details than Mr. Teague who did a wonderful presentation. Or I can show you what I suggest that you should do, very honestly. Because I love this place, I respect it deeply. I can tell you, the option to penetrate the wall does make sense. It's not a viable solution and we should not fool ourselves. But there are the good solutions that we can do. And I would like, with your permission, may I go? Which one do you want? The wall? The sound wall?
Please share the wish you wish to share, I guess.
Well, so this is a surprise to me. I don't know what he's going to show us, but they've made application for the presentation that I made to you.
There is a point here, let me help the process. Mr. Teague, as I said, has been very helpful to us and he guided us, he was patient with us.
Let me just interrupt for just one moment, speak to staff for a new for a moment. Kerry, my feeling is he should share what he wishes to share, of course, but if he changes the plan, we'll have to review, we may have to review the process.
We are not changing the plan.
Yeah, it could change the, what he's asking for.
It could. I'd be very interested in hearing it though. Yes, so please.
We are not changing anything.
Okay, please, please share.
And that is actually our point, we are not changing anything. What it's applied, what we applied for, we support, we're changing nothing from the application. However, as we wrote a letter to Mr. Teague, we are not considering to do any penetration in the wall because it's not a feasible solution, it's not realistic. However, I'm not going to, as I said earlier, I want to offer some solutions. And not only stop here and say, "We don't do it and we leave." And that's what I want to offer. Let's do the wall. Let's do the sound wall. If you want, after that I can do, but Mr. Teague's presentation was excellent. I mean, you know everything about the building, the sound wall.
Thank you.
Thank you. As, as I mentioned, this is what we embraced. This is what you saw about eight months ago and I was totally with it and that's why we presented it, otherwise we would not have done it. Here we are today. The lighter area in the middle, it's our site. The whole block, you can see how it lines up along the sound wall that is created here. And the train line you can see going down and the key here, it's somehow to go to the south. As you know, there is a very narrow sidewalk along the bridge about three foot, then there is another sidewalk going along the sound wall, all the way to an intersection to where you can cross. It's about four foot and it has also about two to three foot dirt area that you will see in the next, in the next pages. To get a sense of what I'm talking about, this is a walk along the wall. I did it myself, the photographs I took. And then I'm taking you from the top left corner, right at the 49th Street end. I'm just walking along the wall towards west, all the way to the west. And you can see in the top left corner, I am the end of the road and the train is down beyond that black kind of parapet, whatever was left there by the wall, the sound wall builders, and you can see the bridge. And now I'm going back. And I'm going back and please note two things, the height of the wall and the slope at the base of the wall. Now I invite you to go, as you get to the bridge, we go along the sidewalk to, on Vernon Avenue. Then from here, I'm going actually east and you can see how I arrived to the east. And then in the bottom photos, I'm turning back and I see the key intersection that we are looking to get the people to, which is the Interlochen and Vernon in the picture on the bottom right. Now, working in many communities is very important to, that's why I told you, connectivity opportunities, when I started, I made the promenade, like in a second. But you really need to have a meaning and to be able to see what's going on and have security in crossing roads or crossing intersection or having, you know, visibility and safety, which we unfortunately got a spur of a 100 going to Vernon Avenue where cars are, it's true, decelerating, but they are fast. And very important also, I have to tell you something, you may have seen pedestrians there. I have never seen a pedestrian there on that, along the wall. I took the photographs, not when somebody was not there. I was there about two hours, nobody was there, not one person. And honestly, you know, I felt kind of, I walked, but it's tight and it, the cars are zooming, but it's true, slowing down, but they are still 40, 50 miles. Then what I believe in being pedestrian professionally is what I'm saying here. It's a designated walkable pass, a space that provides safe and pleasant connectivity or congregation. I mean, it could be linear, it could be a plaza, but it's safe and the people feel comfortable to be there. And I submit to you the concept that we have a very tough order, a very tall order, to do a pedestrian thing along the wall. Why? Because it's super dominant? Why? Because it has a duality with the road? And I think that we are forcing things to make a hole in the wall and, you know, decrease the acoustical, the acoustical protection. This doesn't make any sense. We need to think of other creative solutions because I agree that we need to go from the north to the south. And you know who gave me the ideas? Chad Milner, your person, your study. Your study shows exactly what we need to do. This is another diagram showing in light lines our suggested project with a wall, with a sound wall. And I want you to know that, I'm sure actually, maybe all of you know, you already do have a connection. And the connection has been done by common sense and that is very important because common sense always takes you a long way and it's just on the east, sorry, on the west side of the railroad tracks. I will show you soon photographs. And it's a relatively pleasant walk. It could be nicer, but it's definitely safe, pleasant, normal pedestrian and not against a wall on some kind of passage and through a wall. It's just simply pleasant, I'll show you pictures immediately. Second, look please at the block, the block that we have here. And I mean by this, our site and the two single family homes on our east side. 49th Street ends to the block. That's a very important connection because you don't have to go through anybody's thing. It's a large, it makes sense. And now, as you see, my arrow hits the wall. It's not, I mean, if it were to put a gate someplace, should be there. Would I recommend to do it? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. Because we'll see further how things should be. And then we have also boulevard pedestrian sidewalk along our site. Then already we are starting to offer the first steps of how we should treat this to create connectivity to the south, if this wall is there or not. And then let's move on. You will see, you see right at the top left corner, we are, and I put, you can see the street sign, the 49th and the alley going up. And this is the alley going up at the top right, you got at the top, you see the Interlochen intersection. And then on the bottom row of photos, you go down and then you see where we started. As I said, it needs maybe some work, but at least there is something that makes sense and is designed by common sense, which is good. I always respected that and it's already done by the neighborhood. We don't need to be architects and planners and common sense takes us a long way and this is it. But it's not enough because, you see, you have a very interesting future here. These are your drawings. This is your study. I'm an outsider, but I've worked in plans like this in many places in the world. I want to tell you that you are on the right track and I mean it. You see, it's important not to, we all love cars, but I think already we learned that we need to stop and be a little bit more concerned about the use of car, the, you know, parking lots, roads everywhere when you really don't need them. And what you did here, it's actually you cut a number of roads, you streamlined the transportation, I mean by these vehicles, you streamlined the pedestrian, you streamlined the bikes, and suddenly, boom, you see number six? That area, it's between roads right now. That area doesn't have a tree. That area, it's a wasteland today. And it's a dangerous kind of, you jump from island to island to cross. What you did here will work. You see how now connectivity, I was talking earlier, and how you cross, you have the chances to make it across the road and you have a green area or whatever you want, I'm suggesting that to make a green area, you are making sense. Now, the wall, it's there. But everything that you did here makes sense for the future of Edina and make it much better. And then you have some options. You have this option in which already you might want to consider putting in the budget and talking with a, with a train, I don't know the name of your company of trains, but you know, talk with them to allow you to, that walkway pleasant. We have along us, our property on the north, the sidewalk. And then we can, you might want to do a penetration, remember the arrow that hit the wall? Right there, I put in that circle, right now it's a kind of an orange circle. There, you can make a penetration of what you want, but at least now you have some breathing room. You have a space that you don't cross the wall and fall onto the road. You know, you can also put another wall because a year ago, Mr. Teague explained to us there might be a wall. And then I offered to him to integrate their wall as I did the sweep of the promenade between two walls like this, that it comes into the, into the parallel walls, but things develop differently and it is how it is. Then right now here, this is definitely a suggestion that might make sense. And actually, I think that this is a suggestion that makes the best sense. Because we don't need, once the roads are going to be corrected the way that you propose, you will not need the wall. The sound wall will become irrelevant along this property. The sound wall will have to be exactly as shown here and look what you are gaining. You are gaining a park or a property that you may want to sell for whatever, you know, housing or whatever you may want to do. You have the crossings correctly achieved and you are according to your plan. I mean, I didn't invent this, you inspired me to look at this this way because it makes total sense. And now, at least you can see the neighborhood, you can see what's across the street. Because currently, you see a wall. And you will see, there were some discussions, there was a question, how much is the drop from Vernon to our street? On the east side, we're about 10 feet. On the west side, we're 20 feet, but from the inside of our property to the inside of our property. If we take the wall location and 49th, it's over 30 feet. And remember that these walkways have to be ADA and all that. We, I mean, as I said, it's not feasible and it's not making sense when really you have much better options according to your own thinks. And as I mentioned earlier, I learn from experience and from things that I've seen in the world. We cannot force things to make good town planning. When you have a freeway exit and a sound wall, it's a monumental barrier. It's not something that we, I'll make a gate. No, it doesn't work that way. But I think we have, we have solutions. You saw already, I don't want to qualify how pleasant the walk would be along the wall inside and outside, you have your own opinion about it. And I think that you have, based on your Grandview District Transportation Study, the solutions right ahead of you. Thank you for doing it this way, kind of upside down, but now I think we know together the whole story.
Well, thank you very much for that presentation and I hope you'll share it with staff and they can review it internally. Are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Strauss, your...
I wish I knew if a question was, no, I...
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, I just have a simple comment. When we first talked, what was it, last year sometime, someone meant, toward the end of the meeting, someone mentioned the possibility of the wall. And I think everyone, including you, if that was happening to the extent that it could have been, would be very destructive to the project's potential and the connectivity of the neighborhood. And being involved with this Grandview Study and with some other planning in that area, I think we're all learning that there are so many entities at play with these long-range plans that often don't interface with our community that we're just stuck with. So we saw this, we knew that what we wanted to do with that intersection was take that sweep out to slow people down, make it safer for pedestrians to cross. However, that wall is just happening. And I don't know the viability of getting to the solution you proposed and your option two. I mean, I think everyone that was participating in that Grandview District Transportation Study thought that was what we should do. However, things were in place to do otherwise, so we're kind of stuck with it. I doubt, mind out would be like, okay, yeah, let's take down that wall and build a new one. Unfortunately, if we're looking forward many, many years, maybe that'd happen. But yeah, I just have more of a comment of, I share your frustrations, you know, as a planning commission, we have to react to things. And unfortunately, this is an example of different entities not, not sharing... And unfortunately, this is an example of different entities not sharing the same vision.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Bennett. In a few moments, we'll have a chance to all discuss this further. But at the moment, does anyone have any further questions regarding the applicant's presentation or proposed development? Commissioner Burubi.
Well, I, maybe you can clarify. So we, you've talked about the wall and moving in the green space and the walk, but we haven't talked about the building. We haven't talked about the development. So, this is really, are you still proposing to go forward with the development even if, I mean, we can't move the wall?
We are proposing to go ahead with the development submitted to you for your review, but we do not know how to create a wall, a hole in the wall that makes sense.
But aside from that, you're still proposing you're going to build?
Absolutely.
So I think we should talk about that.
And you will see also in the development that now I designed it the other way around. Instead of being transparent towards the south, I created an enclave to take out of the picture the wall. Because the wall is so dominant that you don't want in a single-family residence area to have the wall being the subject of, you know, all the pedestrian activities and everybody. And that's why I tried to create, as Mr. Teague showed our site plan, and maybe we can look at the landscape, we create, I tried to create kind of a U shape to just simply create our environment and an end to the neighborhood against the wall and hide it. Hide the wall, take the wall away from the composition of the neighborhood.
So the scope of our discussion tonight, I would like to recommend that we bifurcate this a little bit. First of all, the scope of the discussion are the building plans themselves. And then, as there's an pertinent matter, which is whether we wish to recommend that there be a sidewalk created as city staff recommends. I would encourage us to not, I would encourage the city and the developer to look further at the developer's options, but that's not the scope of tonight's discussion, to reimagine pedestrian transit in Grandview. So, I'm going to, I'm going to separate the discussion a little bit and ask right now if anyone has any questions about the proposed development, not the site, other than the sidewalk. Thank you, Commissioner Hubs.
Yeah, I think you just pull up the site plan itself. There you go. Whoop, go back one. So I guess I'm most curious about house number five that is right next to the wall. You just mentioned, you know, having the idea of a house right next to the wall. And that, given that's the southern exposure, it just seems it's really tight against the wall and you've got no plan there for any vegetation. It's, I don't know if you did any kind of study about what kind of shadow the wall casts to that house? It seems like it's going to be a very dark place. Could you discuss that a little bit?
We definitely will have vegetation against the wall. I apologize for missing that vegetation between the house and the wall. Because I think that is very important from that house to look at trees of various types rather than the wall as we have at house number four. And this will be corrected, it will be absolutely corrected. Looking about studies, definitely we'll look and study each and every house here and how the train coming by may influence them and also the spaces that we created. And what I try to do here is, at the end of our local road, our, let's say, private street that we created, I didn't want to have an end perspective, the sound wall. And that's why this is a special house, a different house, which is to start, is the only two-story house, I mean basically two-story house from the beginning and will be the end perspective of our little road, our little bow road. To really make this totally part of the neighborhood to the north and protect everybody else from the very intense barrier that the sound wall creates at over 20-foot high.
I'd just like to add a couple of comments. One, a lot of the property is mind out property to the south of the property line there where we're, maybe they'll let us plant trees, maybe not, but we just don't know that today. And also, the fifth house on the end is, as Dan said, a two-story home. It will have a lofted area which will allow us to get some light in on that southern exposure.
Yeah, that house is designed differently. It's a through lighthouse, the main nave in the center, as you will see in the application, it's bringing a lot of light to the whole house. We looked at all this.
And do you have an estimate in terms of the price for these houses that you're proposing in your market city?
Yeah, so they're in the $650 to $850 range for the houses and the condominiums.
Any further questions? Just regarding the development, I will come back to the sidewalk and all the issues surrounding that in a moment. But the buildings, the structures, the land, Commissioner Lee, oh, Commissioner Burubi, do you?
I was just going to say, I think from what I could see on the plans, overall, they're pretty attractive. I mean, the only thing I would comment on is, in general, I prefer the garages to the side or the back. Maybe you can't fit that in this way. But the architecture looks good. It looks like it's going to be, in my opinion, a real asset to the community. And it'll be interesting to hear if there's comments from the people who live close. But given that it's just a modest incremental increase in residents and the attractiveness of the project, I would think that this would be welcomed by the community. So, I guess that's all I was going to say. Oh, and also thank you for, I think the peaked roofs are, you know, the prior approval was for the flat roof. So it fits in better with the community.
Are there any other questions or clarifications regarding the property itself? Commissioner Bennett.
So I think we share the same frustrations and why you've had to change things around. And I still see some limitations as to how this interfaces with the neighborhood, which has been a recent common topic of conversation amongst us and other projects, how we interface with our neighbors. And in this case, these properties, this property is pretty high up. It kind of continues with quite a bit of topography up to the wall and then that adds the extra height. But I kind of worry about the specific height. It looks like that one east building is 60 feet above grade and how that really, even though it's a little farther away from the house to the east, how that towers over it and especially towers over the houses that face that and face the sun that are north of that. And I think you mentioned maybe your philosophy of why you switched out the two condominium buildings and kind of separated and made them detached and why that one's on the east to kind of close off this area. But to me, it kind of makes more sense to interface with the neighbors, to have it the other way around, to have that condominium along the tracks where the height's kind of already going that direction. And then you have those detached houses alongside the other houses and kind of more in the view of the houses to the north. So I just want to hear your, I guess, philosophy behind that and maybe I kind of addressed it, but...
Commissioner Bennett, I've thought about that too a lot. And at the end of the day, I looked what's the most respectful to the land. And if you look at our, this image that you have on the screen, nature tells us here that on the right side, on the east side, we have 10-foot drop. On the west side, we have 20-foot drop. And remember, I was fair, no cheating. I have another five-foot drop to the street on the Forty-Ninth. And I have another five foot at the bottom of the wall that I didn't include here. And I believe when we tries architects and town planners to do buildings and to try to be respectful to the land that we put them on, that we need to do minimum disturbance. And also, we need to keep in our minds, why do we do them? We do them, is this our situation here specifically, for people to live in? When I had the previous design, the one with two buildings, I didn't have the opportunity to share with you, you know, the difficulties that I had the building on the west because I had a 20-foot drop. The residences at the back were looking at the wall, whatever, we know, a big slope going up. It was, it was, you see, when I have this garage of the condominium buildings, which is a big box slab, that you won't even know that is there. And it melts into the wall, into the site. And, no, I'll take the dirt from where we dig to wrap it around. All you'll see from the garage is the garage door. And suddenly you see it's a basement, you don't even know that is there. That, dealing with a big mass of things, then I felt professionally that since we have, and the nature has given us in time, this kind of stepping downhill, 20-foot drop, why not to keep it that way? Why to force and move tons of soils when we can have a more lighter solution on the ground by just taking and naturally put the four homes on four steps that we do just a little bit of grading to create some platforms that even those could be a little bit slanted and we are the lightest footprint on the dirt? That's how I work wherever I go. And I check the geotechnical situation here because sometimes you may encounter things that you want to take all the dirt away. Here we have good geotechnical conditions. I felt that being most respectful on the land would be to do minimum disturbance. And that's how I kept doing for very, many years. And I've never had technical problems or, you see, I try to also offer sun. You are in the northern climate here and as you may have noticed, the single-family homes are really, every room in the single-family homes faces the south excepting the garage. Things are done on purpose, certain ways, to really offer everybody as people a good quality of life and the land, minimum disturbance. I felt that we have enough with the wall. We need to be light. And that's why, that's why I did it. But I thought about this a lot myself. And also, I think in the future, your, this block is going to, on the east side, is going to also receive, in the future, I don't know, in five, 10, 20, 30 years, whenever, there may be more housing there in the style of what we do. Because that, you know, that end, that end of the Forty-Ninth Street on the east will definitely become a connection somehow because both option one and two will work. Option one, it's a hole in the wall, but at least now you have that room. After you redo your traffic, you have the room to do something that makes pedestrian sense. Until this wall go away, if ever goes away, there will be no physical and visual connection between neighborhoods. And that's a problem that you will address it, however it will be addressed in the future. But what is done is done. Very good point. I struggled with it a lot myself, but then my decision to do it light on the land, I felt that this is better. But it's not wrong what you said. We are both right, but I'm the designer, I did it.
Yeah. No, and I guess my response would be, you know, I agree with what you're saying for minimal impact to the land. I totally agree with that. However, how a development responds to the immediate neighbors when there's other people involved, to me, overweighs that consideration.
I respect that.
Especially when you're talking about, you know, that train track, that, that whole landscape was man-made anyways. I just see a benefit of having the more dense unit on the west overlooking the trees. There's no neighbors over there that you're peering down into their backyard where you'd have that, with that being on the east side. I think you just simply avoid that whole conflict and just interface with the neighborhood. When you're walking into the neighborhood, once you get into it and you're coming from different directions, it just seems like it would fit the character more. So that's just my, that's my response.
They are here on the screens, I think, today and what we propose. I need to mention, which is I think important, that this three-and-a-half-story building that we have, it's stepped at the ends of the building on purpose to really make it softer on the neighborhood and to really make it, you see, you are in a seam area, right? South, sorry, right, right north of Vernon from the commercial area at the south. Then this area really also I think needs a little bit of muscle. That's why originally we came with two buildings, a little bit of present, a little bit of transition. But this is not to argue, Commissioner Bennett, you are right in what you said too. That's not arguing. It's just, you choose what's possible and what makes more sense. And I think that we have an area that is really difficult to really find the right and only solution. And I think that what we have does make sense for the neighborhood in my professional view and that's why we submitted it that way. But it's, we studied that and I thought nights and many nights about these things. And this, this one, 5149, and it should be this way because it's many, many reasons that we have.
Okay, my next comment would be about the sidewalk, I think Commissioner Nemirov brought it up.
Yes.
And it looks like there's, you know, a substantial green space with trees, but the sidewalk's right on the street or is there a space? Because, is there a space? That just look... It looks like the sidewalk's right on the street. Is it from that image?
Oh, you mean the board.
No, I mean up on the, actually.
This is how you will see the first house.
I guess I'm talking about on Forty-Ninth.
Yeah. But right now, it's not showing because the dark area would be the sidewalk in the future. But this is how generally the height, the house will be at the first, the first impact coming into the, looking at our project.
Okay. Yeah, no, just from what he said and from the height as you're getting into that, I mean, I think I'd respect more of a setback, have a boulevard between a sidewalk right on Forty-Ninth, just to be consistent with our street policy, so.
Yeah, and Commissioner Bennett, that came up in our meeting with staff, Kerry. I believe that staff is requiring a boulevard in between the sidewalk and the street.
That's the conditions, right.
Okay. I just didn't see it in the plans specifically. It was kind of hard to tell, so, thank you.
It's in the civil and in the, it's in the civil and in our landscape plans too. But they're black and white, not colored, not, but we, what Mr. Kerry Teague said, we'll do. It's no discussion.
Staff, Commissioner Lee, please.
I actually find the mix of housing types very intriguing. Your last, when you were here last for sketch plan, you essentially had two twins. And I think I'm still having a bit of trouble with sort of the massing and the overall height. But I think you are trying very hard to bring it down and you are sort of, as you said, in a bowl. And I think you did a good job of showing what it would appear to be from the backside, from the burn-in side. So maybe the height itself is not so much of an issue now that you're willing to put other housing types in it. It feels like a very interesting community. Are these going, are any part of it going to be rental or is it all owner-occupied?
It's all owner-occupied, Hudson.
Okay. We definitely need some of that. And I think you give, there's more choices here then. If you want to be in sort of a bigger building where you have your own unit or if you want it more of a house feel with your own little piece of potential yard, drive in your own garage, there is some of that. So we don't have that right now in Edina.
Commissionally, I would like also to comment on something. The four residences on the west side are proposed to be generally the same mass, but in reality, they are one or two-story. In other words, based on how the market will respond to what we present to the market, we may have all one-story of the design that you see though, the design that is presented here. And we will have just a normal attic or we will do a second floor in the attic for people that want to do two actual floors. And then we present both options that you know and that will be... And then we present both options that you know, and that, that will be reacting to whatever the market may, may, may want, even to further create variation for potential buyers.
Okay. But they will have a cohesive feel. It seems like you're, you're trying to repeat similar materials and colors, so it's, it's not going to be as much as.
Yes, actually, all four street elevations are going to be different. We don't want to be repetitive. They will be like cousins, or like family. But all will be different. With similar scale, the material, you can see how they will play. While actually, the ground-level floor, it's, it's going to be pretty similar in all four. We try to create variation in a creative, economical way.
Yeah, okay. I, I do want to say that then, is it number five is the house that's at the top of the hill, backed up to?
That's a special one.
Okay. That, it just feels like it's too much of an afterthought, you know? You can see it on the, the site plan. It's, it's being squeezed in there, so I know that you're sensitive to that. If, if that is going to remain, it's going to need some massaging. I don't know what the answer is, but it feels a little tight there and, and backed up.
I agree with you. We will massage it.
Yeah. Okay. The, I think the last thing, oh. I'm still thinking about this east side versus the west half for the multi-story building. Is there anything in the site topography that puts it more advantageous to put it on the east side versus against the, the railroad tracks?
Absolutely. It's, it's monumental advantageous.
Would the building appear taller if it were on the west side?
It would be taller.
It would be, right?
It would be taller, and, and it will be taller, and also I will have problems. The south residences will look to a berm, and then to the wall. It's going to be unbelievable. The north residences and the garage is going to be like this, going up to the garage. And it will be a dominant, big building, because it's, if, if, remember, let's go, we are on the high side.
Yeah, I noticed the contours there, yeah.
Yeah. And I want to, this one, and I want to underline, I stayed within the property. I didn't do, take anything to be advantageous to, to, to my point. I stayed inside. It's absolutely, I have no doubt that we have it in the right place, because it fits softly the natural grade there. Rather than start to excavate, to put, put great berms, because Commissioner Bennett was also right. I, I thought about what he said, but then I, what makes more sense? We studied the 3D, and it was, oh my God, do I take it up, or do I sink it down? Do I hurt the people living in those basements at the back? I'm exaggerating, calling them basement. Or, and then I put the building down, or I go up, then I take it out, then I go to the garage like this, and everybody sees it. It was, it was a catch-22. Grades killed us. Well, you understand what I mean symbolically. I had to, I had to, to choose what was the land and the people best solution.
Yes, thank you. I would suggest that you have some meetings with the neighbors to propose, you know, or have you?
We have.
Oh.
We have, so we, last fall, there was a neighborhood meeting with the two condominium proposed project, and that went very favorable. And we've also had a meeting with the neighborhood proposing this project, and, and we haven't had, we didn't have any issues raised by the neighborhood at that time.
And, and last fall, were you at this stage? Is that essentially what people were seeing?
Last fall, it, the 27-unit project went through sketch plan approval with the planning commission and the city council. That's what was presented to the neighborhood as well.
Okay, so they haven't seen the new plan?
They have.
They have? Oh, they have, okay. All right, so that, that's good. And then I would say the last, my last comment is, is, is just one sort of aesthetic. Not a big fan of arch windows, not sure that that's quite the vocabulary we have here in Edina, but not saying that, it should be exempted. And then play with the, the palette of the materials a little bit more. I know that you've got some options here, but overall, right now, it feels, feels very dark, and maybe there's a reason for that. That kind of keeps it tucked away a little more, but it, it didn't have sort of that sense of something, I would say, that, it, it, it almost reminded me of something that was done maybe 20 years ago. So I, just saying aesthetically, on the materials and the expression, that's it.
Okay, and Commissioner Lee, are you speaking to, to both the?
Primarily the multi-story building.
Multi-story building.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Strauss.
I, just looking at, usually this doesn't come up, I'm on the utility plan sheet, C4. Just, it looks like all the storm water will be handled on-site.
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
So, I see. I'm just curious, showing a hydrant at the end of the, right in front of that building five. Perhaps it's a question for Carrie. How do fire trucks get, turn around?
All buildings are fully sprinkled.
All the buildings are sprinkled?
Every, every one.
Okay. But you are showing a hydrant at the end of, right in front of?
Our engineers.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm curious, do fire trucks, Edina, like going down dead-end?
No, because we are, because we are fully sprinkled, all the residences are sprinkled, single-family homes and condo. The road is allowed to be 300 feet long, we are way under. Then the, this was checked with the fire marshal and approved, and that's why you'll see on the cover sheet, we are fully sprinkled.
That's fine. I didn't see an engineering report. Thank you.
Are there any other questions that might be commissioners regarding the building or the, separate from the sidewalk issues? I had a couple. First of all, there was a question asked about the shadow, and maybe this is just my imagination, or I saw something that I misinterpreted, but Carrie, in your presentation, wasn't there, I thought I saw something that implied some sort of shadowing. Am I, that was, that was a misinterpretation by me? Okay.
Yeah, I didn't have a shadow, this shadow study wasn't done.
All right, thank you. The second question, I know other commissioners have spoken about a little bit too, is the setback on 49th. Could you discuss to me why you need such a short setback, and what, what your thoughts are about the impact on the neighborhood?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you. I went from Interlaken, and we stopped at the beginning of 49th many times. And I was looking from the end of the street, I was standing on the west side, looking that way. And I wanted to, I mean, I, I, the neighborhood is pleasant, it's, it's, it's single-family homes. And I was thinking what, what, that's when I was thinking, what I was discussing with Commissioner Bennett, is this three-story or is this one-story? And then, as I felt that, after you cross the railroad tracks, because the rendering that you have, it's kind of from that point of view, what do you see? Are you totally hidden? Are you totally, you don't even know that you are there, when actually we have a, sorry, when actually we have a very pleasant development, I think. And then I wanted to first, to have the first house, to see, to a glimpse of the corner. And that's the reason how we work in cities, we have the cities catch up and all that, and we went to the street and looked. When do you hit the angle that you are there, but you are surrounded by existing trees, because we have a ton of trees there, that we keep them all? What's the first thing that, when do you show up? When do you show off? And then after the first house, how you encounter the, how you find that there is a stair-step on going up the hill, there is even a bow road that, you know, takes you to the homes. And it's, it was an experience that I felt that was appropriate for a new project, you know, respecting the land, respecting the neighborhood, and how it relates to the neighborhood. It's an interpretation of an architect, or what I thought that makes sense there. But it was not just, it happened. We looked at the 3D, we looked up, down, all the angles, we looked at the shadows. I prefer to hide the wall away from the neighborhood. It was my recommendation to the owners, and they agreed. And that's why I created something, that I took the wall out of the composition, because I wanted a soft neighborhood. I didn't want a hard neighborhood.
Thank you. Well, are there any further questions on the structure, or can I move to the sidewalk? I'd like to frame the discussion of the side, and the questions regarding the sidewalk. Oh, yeah, good on the, you guys are all commissioners, and you'll have an opportunity, if you have further questions before we close about the building, we'll have at it. On the sidewalk, so I'd like to frame the discussion and the questions. The, the main question is whether or not we should ask, make a recommendation that a sidewalk be built as recommended by staff. If you feel no, because there are other solutions that are better, that's perfectly fine. But with regard to this, with regard to building a sidewalk on this property, does anyone have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
No, if we're going to propose that, I would, I would like the discussion to include green space and walkway, as we saw along the railroad track, because that is a natural path, that's already there, and people are already using it, and it's working. So I think it does make sense to at least consider it, as opposed to building a path with steps, opening up a hole in the wall. So I want that to be part of the discussion, if we're going to say we need a sidewalk. It should be a walkway, but maybe not necessarily on this property.
Thank you. So maybe Planner Teague, if you could join this, maybe the, maybe the, maybe an appropriate frame for you, since some members of the commission, I mean, we're struggling with this sidewalk versus other possible sidewalks. Can you speak to as to why the city thinks that this would be the appropriate location for the sidewalk?
Yes, it's, in speaking with engineering staff and, you know, our requirements for sidewalks with any development, we want to take advantage of the opportunities that are presented us. This is an opportunity to provide a connection through this site up to Grand View. So we wanted to stick with that recommendation. You know, some of those other things may or may not happen in the future. You know, that's, that's railroad property, we would have to secure those. So those are all potential for the future, but this is an opportunity that's in front of us, and we thought we should, should take advantage of it, similar to the, the previous requests where that was required.
Chair Nemirov, just to, just to help.
Certainly, Mr. Miller.
Frame the discussion here. We would respectfully request that the commission take action tonight, based on the plan that you have in front of you, and remove the condition of having a sidewalk run through the site.
That's a fair request. But we, we, we may make additional conditions on the request, of course, and, you know, that is definitely one of the considerations. We, we, but with regard to the, if you're, if you're asking us to no longer ask questions or discuss the sidewalk, I'd probably have to say no, we won't be able to do that this evening.
No, not at all. I, I understand that.
Okay, but we, that may be where we end up, certainly. I thought I saw Commissioner Hobbs with.
Yeah, I guess my, my comment on the, on the sidewalk and the, and all the wonderful ideas you had about what this place could be, I, I would be cautious, we have a proposal in front of us. And what people are using now along the railroad, who knows if that's going to be a viable corridor and what happens with the railroad in the future? So I don't think we should plan on that. We can only look at what we have in front of us, and if there's some kind of connection with this particular project that makes sense, again, thinking futuristically about what may happen, that's what I think we can consider. But otherwise, I'd be cautious about looking at a trail that people are using right now that may or may not be viable in the future.
So that's a fair comment. And with that, what I'd like to ask is if, if there are more questions for the applicants, because we will have an opportunity as a commission to have a discussion. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Otherwise, I would ask that maybe we allow anyone from the audience to speak. Commissioner Lee.
Would you be willing to look at coming up with a design using that railroad track property as, as part of it? Pardon? I understand that. This is conceptual. I think if they've got a good designer on board, this is the time to ask that question. And I understand that we have no right to take it, but it would help me understand, if that's really in fact a much better way, this might not be the right thing to do, even though we have the opportunity to make this applicant do it on his property. Just because we have that opportunity, I don't know that that's the right thing to do. So the only way to understand that is see what, what would another alternative look like? And there's no guarantee we would get that other alternative, but it would help me weigh that as far as enforcing or, or requiring this applicant to provide that through his property or part of his project. So I'll ask that question again. Would you be willing to look at and provide some concepts back, saying, we don't want to do it on our property, but here's how we would design it?
I mean, I'll, I'll be happy to work with Mr. Teague and his colleagues, and with your city, but I find it, but we need, we need to know if, this process may take some time, and I, I don't want to tie this, I will be, as I said, thrilled to work and help you with the approval and the process of moving ahead with the project.
Sure. It's just a question. I mean, it kind of says.
The answer is totally yes. Totally yes. Remember, I started it uninvited. I love what I do. Then you have me if you want to. But I'd like also to make sure that we get the process moving.
Yes. Great. Thank you.
I hope that I understood your question correctly.
You did.
The answer is yes, I would love to help you, but not to, not to combine these two items.
Thank you. Any, any further questions for the applicant? Commissioner Berube.
No.
Okay. With that, I'm, I'm, we'll have another chance. I would like to thank the applicant, and please stick around. I, I'm guessing, I'm predicting that we might have more questions for you. And you have more that you'd like to share.
I want to say something. I know the gentleman there, I'll work with him. He will help us tremendously.
Certainly. Would that gentleman there relate to?
Yeah, we work with him, and I already interfaced with him several times, and he's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, this is a public hearing, as mentioned. Would any members of the, are there any members of the audience who would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, I'd like to, oh, please, come on up, state your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Collette Prohaski, 4821 Rutledge Avenue, right at the bottom of Brookside. The, I was just going to say that the, the path you're talking about along the railroad track is affectionately called the secret path by the, by the neighborhood, by the neighborhood. We tell our children that's the secret path up there. And as far as that versus a sidewalk, I guess I would just want to encourage you to do both, because, you know, the, the path by the railroad track, you know, like, we don't own the property, but it, I don't know how, why it would be a problem to have both options there. And I, I think the plans look good. I mean, I think we need something like that in the neighborhood. My only other concern is that the cost of the units is very high, which I'm, I'm sure is probably what's going to happen. I, my wish would be that we would have something that was a little bit more affordable in the neighborhood. So those are just my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Well, this is the secret TV show, so I don't know if the secret path will remain secret anymore, but commissioners, let me open it up for discussion. Do you have further comments you'd like to make? Commissioner Berube?
Can we close?
Well, I was, I guess we can. Would you, with that, because, thank you, Commissioner Strauss.
Second.
Second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Commissioner Berube, do you have other comments?
I, I was just going to propose, so that we don't, one, tie ourselves in, or tie the developers into building a sidewalk, when there might be another alternative, that we word our proposal so that we can be flexible with what we might find out in the future regarding the railroad. Because these things, you know, you're going to have probably a year, at least, right? Maybe things will happen between now and then, or knowledge about the railroad, or knowledge about different paths. And so I'm wondering if there's a way that we can word our request for a path to have flexibility. And just leave it at that.
Well, let's keep that thought open. If anyone has suggestions, we can make it. Commissioner Bennett, I.
Yeah, I mean, just being familiar, working with the railroad to secure permits or doing any work, they're typically very protective of their right-of-way, let alone new building and amenity on it. So I'm just, I don't think. So I'm just, I don't think, more along what Commissioner Hobbs is saying, I don't think we let this opportunity go. And like the resident said, what's the harm in having a connection for even this little community and then the community as a whole in a different location? And then I'll join other things.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Neither. I practiced architecture for 40 years and crossed Burlington or there more than once. It's like watching glaciers move. We're not going to live long enough to see the railroad make a change. If we want a sidewalk, we need a sidewalk. My comment on the, on the site is the previous development had a delightful promenade that came through it. It seemed to be very generous with its site. This is very tight. These houses are, are fit in very, very closely. I don't, I see that there's going to be some difficulty getting that sidewalk in. I question whether house number five is perhaps the culprit that causes it to be too tight. I don't see that sidewalk fitting with house five comfortably. And I think if house five goes away, and I appreciate that's a very, very difficult thing to do, given the land cost and, and the comment that house prices are, are steep and they would like to see them reduced. You don't reduce the house prices by reducing the unit count. And I acknowledge that's a conundrum, but if that sidewalk's going in, I think it, it will require one less unit.
Commissioner Jones.
I guess I would just start by saying that I'm still overall kind of unconvinced of this project. And the first reason for that is this idea that's kind of been discussed of the east versus the west and what's on the east of this big structure. And I still don't completely understand why that has to be there. And the first reason I say that is that in the initial proposal that we saw, and I think it was September, October, there was another big structure on the east side, or on the west side, rather. So I don't see why we can't, that like switch can't occur, but perhaps the grading discussion had yet to occur at that point. So the second reason is that if the landscape really necessitates the arrangement where such a, this structure that's really looking into the neighbors' backyards is on the east side, it seems just too imposing. But the really main reason why I don't see this development working is about what happens with the fifth house or house five because first, just the thought that there may or may not be any greenery behind it and that it's so close to this wall and that might be what people are looking out to as like functionally their backyard doesn't seem to make much sense. And then on top of that, this idea of a shadow and that although the house may be able to accommodate better lighting, we're having that discussion without having even seen any sort of study about what that shadow would look like. So it just seems premature to make that decision about that fifth house, which really does seem packed in there when there's no really empirics to tell us about what that shadow is going to look like.
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss.
Overall, I'm, no, I, I like the project. I like the design. I like the architecture. The, the attempts to, you know, going, reducing from the 27 to the 17 units, I think, showed that they had listened the last time, you know, they were here. I don't really have a problem with that building five. But the sidewalk connection, if there's some way to, to, to deal with, I, I found your, your, your explanation compelling and I do believe that there's a better alternative. But we've also heard the difficulties with pursuing those alternatives and I somehow, I think we need to go ahead with the sidewalk connection and work on a, work on an alternative.
Commissioner Lee, do you have further comments?
I have a question for Carrie. We didn't discuss anything about affordability, affordable units. So this is, this project is, does not fall under the criteria where we would, and can you explain that criteria again?
Correct. The criteria is any development that exceeds 20 units. So being this is 17 units, it, the policy, the affordable housing policy would not qualify. The previous request at 27, they were talking about having a, quite a significant number of affordable units.
Commissioner Lee, is that?
I, I'm kind of torn. I, I do, do not think a door in the wall is a solution, nor is it appropriate. I can't imagine who would be using that feeling like they're cutting through somebody's backyard. And if we keep that requirement in there, that may be the only way that the applicant can meet the requirement. Is that really what we want? So in some ways I need to, to see what, what, you know, we have stated that as a potential requirement from the engineering's memo, but it's difficult to go ahead and say, yeah, let's, let's, let's move to approve without knowing what does that look like, though? What is, are we asking the applicant to do something that really won't, won't be good for the city? That's my dilemma.
Commissioner Hobbs, do you have further comments?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly recognize this is a, a very challenging site and our, our friends at MINDOT by building the wall made it that much more challenging. That said, I, I don't know that it's our place to speak to the business plan of this project. I am dubious about the ability to sell houses, single-family houses at this price point when there's so much more of that housing stock at that price point, the price range in Edina that is not as challenged by walls and railroad tracks. So, and I do think that this is very tight, as Commissioner Hamilton pointed to. I think house number five is just kind of stuck in there. So I am dubious about this project for those reasons. And I think, getting back to the issue about the sidewalk, I, I think looking at this project and where it stands, we have to provide some kind of access to get out. I'm imagining that the Grandview area is going to change in the future. I hope that it does, but we have to provide at least that possibility with this particular project in terms of pedestrian access to connect. So I think we need to somehow put in the project that's in front of us.
My, I, I have very mixed feelings about this. On the one hand, I find this to be an attractive project that I think will renew the neighborhood. And I, I, I appreciate the developer, how they've worked with us to, they've shrunk this development size and the number of units and they've been very creative and some ideas at the, at the same time, I'm concerned about, I, I, I'm concerned about the, that setback on 49th Street. I'm concerned about the, the size, the height of the project. And I'm torn. I, I can't say much different than anyone else. I'm torn about the sidewalk. I, I think that this is the best opportunity for a sidewalk and I think it's not going to be a very nice sidewalk. So I'm kind of torn about that. I don't know what else to say. Those are my thoughts. Would, with that, I guess after our further comments or questions on the, on the, Commissioner Bennett, do you have an initial comment?
And I'd just like to echo the, the opportunity we have here to provide a connection. Whether or not it's the best one, it's not because we have a wall there. But it's an opportunity for at least this community that you're developing, even just this community itself, to have a connection to that area. Even if they only use it, that's worth it to me. However, I do think there's creative ways to use what's there already, the vacated, you know, the vacated driveway on the very western boundary has grades that would support a sidewalk kind of going up it, that would be in the backyard of those single-family homes. However, I feel if that swap occurred like we talked about, maybe it's not as imposing when it's in the backyard of, you know, multifamily condo structure. So I think there's opportunities there. If that fifth house isn't there at the end of that drive, that seems like a natural connection point. Or things can be shifted around where that road bends more to one direction to accommodate the house still maybe at the end, but it actually curves around it or something and heads more west to provide that connection. But to me, I use that dirt path a lot, probably still will, but if there is a sidewalk that's there that provides a much more safe, perhaps ADA accessible route for people to traverse, not just by walking, but also by biking, I don't know if that's feasible, but the grades seem steep, but at least consistent that you could have a somewhat straight shot up to the wall along the west boundary. I'm going to stop rambling, but yeah, I, I'm convinced that we need to use this opportunity to provide a connection.
Commissioner Berube, did you have further comments?
It's important, as you had mentioned before, that we bifurcate these decisions because the wall is there and anything in that space is either going to be cutting through the wall or we're going to have to do something else. So maybe we should decide on whether we like the development and what our comments would be on that and then, and then we just have to go with the wall or go with the sidewalk, right? I mean, I don't want to get the, the decision for the development dragged down because of this, the sidewalk, which is really difficult because of the wall, but the wall is not going anywhere and it's always going to be difficult.
Commissioner Berube, would you or any other commissioner member like to make a motion or is there, or is there further discussion to be, Commissioner Lee?
One more question. I was reading the engineering memo and I'm just curious whether this actually came from MINDOT or is it from our engineer? It's worded this way and the applicant would have to meet this. Construct direct pedestrian access such as a sidewalk or trail facility to Vernon Avenue from the central private street. So that's their street, not 49th, from their little center thing that now ends in house five. MINDOT has stated access will be granted. Options for access could include removing planks to a certain height between one set of poles, removal between multiple poles, removal of a pole and slash or removals all the way to the top of the wall. Carrie, do you know if that's from MINDOT or?
I believe those are the suggestions that were made by.
Okay, so it's not just a door. I, at least I'm not just picturing a door anymore. So I think there is, is, it gives a little more freedom as far as how you might address that. Just wanted to point that out.
It's a portal. A portal. And it could be steps, you know, there's lots of steps to streets. Any further discussion? Would someone like to make a motion of some sort? I will warn you in advance, I am foreseeing that there may be a second motion here tonight on this matter, but would anyone like to make a, Commissioner Bennett?
Based off of community input, I feel like something like this would have generated more maybe response to the city either in letters or presence of people here. So I, I just, has there been anything that we haven't been aware of? I know you guys said you had a community meeting, but I don't know how we know it went well, except no one's here. I just want to make sure that the community was really included in kind of this discussion.
They were. Our standard mailing notices went out.
Okay.
Properties within a thousand feet.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Addition to the, to the neighborhood meeting that we had in April, we also collected emails. We sent out a link to our set of plans to the neighborhood and we also sent our own mailer to the neighborhood as well.
So, you know, it's just surprising. Usually we hear something, something, at least one thing. So, thank you.
Any further comments or motions by the planning commission? Motion for, against, you know, what's, we have a, we have a staff report with a suggestion to, to recommend this project with the addition of a sidewalk, but people can make any motion they wish. Is there a motion?
I would motion. I would move to approve, given the staff report and the staff report recommendation including the sidewalk.
We have a motion? Is there, is there a second? Is there any amendment? A second. Any further discussion on the motion? Ms. Huganacher, could you do a, a voice vote on this matter, please?
Commissioner Hobbs?
No.
Commissioner Lee?
The motion is to approve the proposal as presented with the sidewalk added.
Yes. Yay.
Commissioner Strauss.
Commissioner Strauss.
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett.
Aye.
Commissioner Berube.
Yes.
Chair Nemiroff.
Nay. But by my count, I believe that's five to two. And so the, the motion has passed. So we do not need to do a second motion. That concludes this discussion. Good luck with the city council.
So this project will go to the city council on June 20th. Little bit of a quick turnaround on this one due to no city council meeting around the Fourth of July.
Thank you, Planner Teague. And that brings us to our fourth public hearing matter of the evening, which is a conditional use permit application for 6879 Washington Avenue for the Jesus Celebration Church. And our closer tonight is Planner Teague, pitching multiple innings tonight.
Okay, thank you Chair and members of the commission. Before you, as a request for a conditional use permit as mentioned, it's located on Washington Avenue. This is the far west end of Edina. This property is extremely unique and that the municipal boundary line actually goes right through the middle of the building. So as you see on the screen, the site is a small portion in the city of Eden Prairie and a small portion of the site in Edina. There's a couple of access points off Washington Avenue. This is actually the, the part of the, the lot, it's a flag-shaped lot. They also have access through the lot to the, to the west from the south. Another look at the property, the green line again indicates the municipal boundary. Property is zone planned industrial district, PID, that's in the yellow. Churches are considered a conditionally permitted use within, well, essentially within every zoning district in the city. So what the applicant is proposing here is to remodel a very small portion of the existing building. It's the area that's highlighted in red. Remodel the, this is an existing light industrial office type building, remodel that into church space. The church has 80 members in its congregation. The seating, so this is a floor plan of the proposed layout inside, inside the building. The seating capacity would be 144 seats, again, 80 members, so there's some room for growth. The, the services would be held Sunday mornings and Wednesday evenings, so during that off time for the, the industrial uses that, that go on there. There are three classrooms for children during the service that would be located on the north end of the building. You may recall, oh, about a year or so ago, we had a similar request for a church in, on Bush Lake Road, a remodeled. So just to give you a size comparison, that church was a 200-member church, about double the size of this. They had a seating capacity of about 360. That site was actually more short parked than the project that we're seeing here this evening. So just to give you a little comparison, that church has been in operation about a year now and we haven't heard any, any issues with it in terms of its shared arrangement that it has with the parking. That church, again, it was Sunday mornings and Wednesday evenings. So this request again requires a conditional use permit and it does meet all of our minimum zoning standards. The existing building meets all of our setbacks, height, building coverage. In terms of parking stalls, so with the sanctuary, 144 seats, 48 stalls would be required. There's 102 parking stalls that exist there today. If all the uses were going on at the same time, including the industrial uses, 109 spaces are required. So they almost meet the, the parking standard on their own. Again, that church that we considered along Bush Lake Road, they were short parked, oh, about 50 or so spaces. So we didn't have a So we didn't have a specific parking or traffic study done for this. I did contact WSB, who did the study on that previous church and we ran through the numbers. They didn't have any concerns in terms of whether enough parking would be provided on this site and the existing roadways could support the project. So with that, staff believes that the conditional use permit or the conditional use permit criteria are met. This project wouldn't have any undue adverse impact on governmental facilities, utilities, services. It will generate traffic within the capacity of the streets that serve the property, would not, well, you can see the standards there. Staff believes that it conforms with all of our minimum code requirements and wouldn't have a negative impact on this, in this area. Churches are considered a conditionally permitted use, so it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit, subject to the findings that are included in your staff report. With that, I can stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you for a concise presentation, Planner Teague. Are there any questions for staff? No. Oh, Commissioner Lee?
This is just a technical one. I'm curious. In their renovation, they're showing a conversion of a, a single set of doors to a double, double doors out of the assembly area. When they exit from there to the gathering area, does the main entrance need to be also enlarged to a double set of doors for egress?
So with all of our development proposals that come before the planning commission and city council, we have a, a staff review where we invite the building department, fire, police, anyone that would, that may have some issues with, with that. So the building department reviewed this and they didn't bring that up.
Okay.
Now that said, they will need a building permit for the specific remodeling.
Yeah.
If that is a code requirement, they would require it at that time.
Commissioner Hamilton?
In your discussions with Eden Prairie in the future, not for now, is there, their vision and their comprehensive plan adjustments to this site are, is the church aware of a change in use that may be contemplated there? Has one been discussed? Is it?
That's an excellent and extremely timely question because I just had a conversation with the community development director in Eden Prairie and they had, they want to meet with us in terms of their comprehensive plan, our comprehensive plan, and their planning efforts for the old Viking facility to the south. So I don't know exactly what those are, but we will be talking about that in terms of our comprehensive plan in the, within the next year, for sure.
And provide advice, advice and counsel to the future tenants of that building so they understand?
We would certainly do that, yep.
Thank you.
Dr. Teague, does the parking count include any of the parking that is not part of the Edina property site? I mean, I'm just wondering. There's additional parking that's serving that building. I mean, did they count those stalls that are not part of that property?
So.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, these spaces are part of the property. This blue line represents the municipal boundary, but the actual lot line is more angled. And so it does include those parking stalls that are actually located in the city of Eden Prairie.
But their uses probably do not overlap the, the other existing businesses, I mean, as far as when they park.
They shouldn't. Like I mentioned, there, if all the uses were going on at the same time, they're very near code compliant as it is. So I, we don't anticipate parking being an issue.
Thank you.
Any, excuse me, any further questions for staff? Would the applicant like to say anything about this proposal? You don't have to. Please state your name, your address, and take the time to share what you'd like to share.
I'm Laura Gethenji, the lead pastor of Jesus Celebration Center. My address is 3371 Malcolm Court, Southwest Prior Lake. I would like to thank the commission for giving us an opportunity to be here today and for considering our application tonight. And I would like to be available for any questions that you might have.
Well, do we have any questions? Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Well, thank you. Maybe we want to come up in a moment, but it looks like we don't have any questions right now, but they, based on my experience, one may come up, so.
I have one.
See? Commissioner Hamilton?
And my question would be the same question that, that we ask Planner Teague. Just the understanding that this area is in transition. There's, things are going to happen over there and to predict what they're going to be is certainly beyond our understanding. But the highest and best use for that land in the future is not to be a light industrial facility and a warehouse. It will change and the, and the, it is my belief it will change and the market conditions will drive that change. And you'll be part of that. It's just important that you have that discussion with your leadership group and understand that the, the future will be different than the present.
Sure, sure. And that's something we are open to discussing. We, we have about a four years list and also our landlord is here too, will be having more conversations about that.
Okay, excellent. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Well?
I just want to say thank you for waiting this whole time.
You're welcome.
That's it. Everything looks really good, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Ms. Gethenji, thank you very much. We may have more, but this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that would also like to speak to this matter, you can have up to three minutes to speak. With that, Commissioner Strauss?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, that, that leads us to a planning commission discussion. Is there any discussion about this matter that people like to have? Commissioner Hobbs?
I'm just going to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit. In accordance with the staff recommendations with one minor change, we kind of changed the name of the church in the staff recommendations. It says the Christian Family Church and it should be Jesus Celebration Center. So without minor change, that's my motion.
Thank you. I think that's a, that's a sound correction. Is there, are there any other, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'd like, if I hold, I'd like to have one comment and that is, and I don't think my comment will affect this matter at all and, but since we approved the conditional use permit a few, a few months ago or several months ago for that church in the, off Bush Lake Road, I had an opportunity to have a conversation with economic development person, a municipal economic development person, who said that lots of cities are taking, oh, I'm overstating this. She said that we should consider, and I got the impression that other cities are also, changing our statute to allow religious institutions to be conditionally uses in any zoning district. That economic development thought these days is that, is that, that you may wish to, to not have religious institutions in any zoning district, that they may be limited to certain districts. That would not, that comment does not affect this matter because this matter, our current ordinance is religious institutions are conditionally uses in any district. But I, but that's something that I would suggest that we consider further because they, it's an, again, it came from an economic development consultant whose belief is that, that religious institutions in certain areas inhibit, inhibit commercial growth. And so that's something I think we should consider perhaps as part of the, as we're discussing the comprehensive plan. With that, if there's any other discussion, if there's not, I'll, I'll open up to a, to a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The motion passes and it'll go to the city council. Thank you.
So this will go similar to the previous project, go to city council on June 20th. I'll be a little more conscientious about placing, where you're placed on the agenda so you don't have to sit so long.
Yes, thank you for your patience this evening. With that, we move to the next stage of tonight's meeting, which is the community comment. Mr. Nohendorf has shown up just in time for community comment, in which anyone in the audience, other with, who can speak to us about any matter not on the agenda, is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing none, motion to?
There were two.
Motion to close community comment. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay? Any nays? Mr. Nohendorf, our next, for the, for our viewers on TV, we now have some reports and recommendations and we have two this evening by the city's economic development director. The first one is regarding transfer of two pieces of property. The first piece of property is at 4416 Valley View Road and the second is at 5146 Eden Avenue and both will be discussed together.
Yes, they will. Yes, thank you. Had to think for a moment there. Let's see, so you have the, the staff memo in front of you and again, thanks. Good evening, my name is Bill Nohendorf. I serve as the city's economic development manager. So unlike your previous agenda items for, for tonight, I don't have a specific project that I'm going to talk about tonight, but the topics on, on, on these items could theoretically enable specific projects to happen someday. So this first item, as the chair has, had mentioned, is regarding transfer of property. And these are both real estate related issues. It's kind of in the weeds. I apologize for that, especially late at night after you've been here for, for many hours. But there's a few properties in this, in the city that are owned by the city of Edina, city hall, police stations, fire stations, those types of things. And there's a handful of properties that are owned by the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. The parking rams down at 50th and France are owned by the HRA. Part of Centennial Lakes has an HRA interest. The HRA was established back in the seventies, 1974, and as the name implies, it was created as a separate agency, similar to the city, but different, to really inspire and encourage redevelopment, housing and general redevelopment throughout the city. According to Minnesota state law, there's different rules that a city follows and different rules that a housing and redevelopment authority follows. Very similar, but there, there's some nuances. In the interest of redevelopment and reinvestment in the community, there's two parcels that are currently owned in the name of the city that we're proposing be transferred to the name of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. When we make that transfer, we are able to encourage redevelopment as opposed to just selling those properties someday for the highest price. Because with the goal of the HRA, it's not just to make money, it's to get great projects for the community. So the proposal in front of you is actually a resolution to find that this, the transfer in name only of the parcels from the city to the HRA is consistent with a comp plan. It's, it's a, maybe a somewhat of a philosophical question because transfer of the real estate name has nothing to do with whatever gets, ends up getting built there. But that, that being said, the first property is on Valley View Road, 4416 Valley View, right down the street from Stuffy's and the new town hall station that should be opening soon by the neighborhood ice cream shop on that stretch. Over the last year, we've entertained a couple proposals. We had issued a request for proposals for that site. Two different developers came forward with two different concepts. They submitted sketch plan, we did some initial conversations. Both of those plans had strong points and both of them had weaknesses, some might call fatal, some might call fatal flaws. So the direction that I was given from the city council or from the Housing and Redevelopment Authority was to see if those two developers could work together and take their, the best ideas of each of their concepts and blend them together and then get rid of the clunky parts that just didn't work. So over a series of a few months, we were able to reach success in that the developers think they can work together and achieve a better project. In order to allow them to even come forward and submit sketch plan again and go through the process, we need to come up with a real estate deal. And the first step in that process is to actually have the HRA have an ownership stake in the land so that we can work with the developers, not to sell the, the property for the highest cost, but to transfer the property for the best project. So we feel that that one in particular should, should go, I just met with the developers this afternoon. They're expecting to come in front of this group in July or August, depending on schedules and seminal dates and everything, but that one could, could go pretty quickly. The second property is the city's old public worksite, 5146 Eden Avenue, a site that many folks are familiar with, the subject of many lengthy conversations and debate. We have not had a great deal of conversation about that site for, oh, probably a year since we did our last study on it, but I'm confident at some point in time, something will happen to that site. I still get calls from time to time from developers that have interest, what can they buy it for, they want to build something and I let them know that, well, right now it's not for sale, we still have an idea, we're not exactly sure what it's going to be. But we'll, eventually when we do have a vision in mind, we'll have to go through the same real estate conversation. Currently, that property is in the name of the city. We want to transfer it to the name of, of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Again, so that when the time comes to sell or trade or build on it or a portion of it, we don't have to accept the highest price tag, we can accept the best project. When the time comes for that site, I'm sure there will be many more lengthy conversations about what is the best project and is it public, is it private, is it a mixture of both? But I, I believe that the transfer of the property of both of these properties is in, is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. It's compliant, it's in compliance with the general small area plans and frameworks that are out there, the 2012 Grand View Framework Plan and the 2015 Wooddale Valley View Small Area Plan. So I feel like I've rambled a little bit. I'm happy to answer questions if that wasn't clear, but in, in front of you this evening is Resolution 201702, which would find that the transfer of these properties in and of itself does not violate or conflict with the comprehensive plan. So with that in mind, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Bennett?
So for instance, the Grand View project, since I don't understand these nuances between whether it's owned by the city of Edina or the HRA, is it basically when it's owned by the HRA, there's more negotiating and leverage between them and the development communities that get a project we want? And does that advantage outweigh whether it's owned by the city where, say for Grand View, say some, say the, the community wants the whole thing public? Is that process different when you're engaging the development community? And I guess, who's initiating those conversations? Is it just so the HRA can start leading the charge versus being reactive to the charge?
Good question. I don't have full answers for both of them.
Perfect.
But I, in the spirit of being perhaps too overly simplistic, when a city sells a piece of property, there's a process you go, go to and essentially you put it on the market to the highest bidder, period. So if you've got a good project that is offering a million bucks and a clunky project that's offering a million and one, you take the clunky project. We don't think that's the right thing to do in Edina. With, when you're in HRA and you own a property, you have the flexibility to weigh not just the price tag, but the project. What's the public benefit? What's the community get? The whole get to give concept. So that's where the extra flexibility comes in. And with the old public worksite in particular, at this point, it's, it's been on the shelf for probably a year. I think the Parks and Rec Group. Group finished their study last April or last May, I don't recall the exact date. And at that time, the conclusion was essentially that that study showed a project that was pretty interesting, highly expensive, and there was not the political will to tax the taxpayers for that big project. So it sat on the shelf for a year, as you all know, staff has been very busy elsewhere in town, working on a myriad of other projects. We're optimistic that towards the end of this year, we'll be able to dust off those plans, the HRA can pick it up again, most likely issue a request for proposal, to put it back on the street, so to speak. The RFP would identify what is the preferred project, is it a mixture of uses, what are those uses, what fits, what doesn't fit? So that's, that is in our work plan, in staff's work plan for 2017, and we would expect that the HRA would lead the conversation, as opposed to just taking offers.
I guess my follow-up, what would be the benefit to protecting the property and keeping it with the city of Edina? And maybe not in these particular circumstances, but say, Weber Woods, or, you know, some that, some public amenity that wants to stay a public amenity, is that kind of the realm that we keep at the city, or does that stuff have the potential to go to the HRA?
Yeah, that's a good question, I mean...
Because I mean, what, you know, I see the advantage of going this way, but what is the benefit of staying?
I suppose that's a question our city attorney could probably answer more fully, I mean, there's a lot of different options out there for parks, and I use the examples of fire stations, police stations, those types of things. It really seems like a lot of the more innovative projects that are happening around the country these days are public-private partnerships. We were at an American Planning Association conference recently, and I was really surprised by the number of public fire stations that are located in high-rise buildings in big cities, and that for some reason, that just never dawned on me, because I don't go to big cities that often, so that seems that that type of trend is more prevalent than others. So in the future, with some of these properties where they're in redevelopment districts, where there's been a framework plan that shows that they're guided for mixed uses, where our comprehensive plan identifies the area as a mixed-use center, I have to think that those sites are probably going to end up going mixed-use. What that means, is it 10% public and 90% private, or is it 90% public and 10% private? I have no idea, and that's not the debate for this evening, but transfer to the HRA would allow that reinvestment to occur, whatever that might be. So I know that's a very nebulous question, but we're not there today.
It just allows more flexibility.
Correct.
Okay, because that's just what I wanted to know, because, I mean, maybe there is, you know, comes a time where we want a full public amenity on a site, you still can do that through the HRA.
Sure.
You just have the opportunity to not just pick highest price tag.
Correct, correct. We're not giving away any options.
And then...
We're creating more options.
And would there ever be a reason to transfer back?
Not off the top of my head, I mean, you could, if there is a benefit, that's a hypothetical I haven't thought through.
Are there any, for Commissioner Bennett, are you... So the discussion tonight is whether the transfer to the HRA complies with the comprehensive plan, are there further questions for Mr. Newendorf? Commissioner Hobbs?
Well, I was just going to ask, does the HRA have its own unique source of capital to invest, I mean, is it just part of the city budget?
Yeah, great question, yes and yes, in fact, yes, yes, and yes to that. So the HRA is a separate taxing body, so we started, the HRA began levying taxes in 2017 for the first time in 40 years, so that is a very small revenue source, I think our budget is like $90,000 or something, it's very, very small. The second source is existing incremental taxes that were created back in Centennial Lakes, when that district was created, and there still is a few million dollars there that we've earmarked in our capital improvement plan for public improvements throughout the city. And then the third source is actually a new state law that finally got passed a week or two ago, regarding the Southdale Mall area. You might recall, there was a TIF district created there in 2011 or 2012, and we, the city of Edina just recently received special legislation authority to use some of those tax dollars that are being created by the new market rate projects, like the One Southdale Place, the shopping mall itself, we can redirect some of those to fund affordably priced projects throughout most of the city. So yes, there are at least three different funding sources that are unique to the HRA that are not available to the city.
And I think that's part of the argument as to why, you know, the HRA just give you that kind of flexibility, and that's really what they were designed to do, to be able to do things like Centennial Lakes.
Are there any further questions? Commissioner Lee?
Uh, Bill, let's see, okay, so who initiated this request? Is it coming from the council, does it come from the HRA, does it come from you?
That's a good question. You got a good, that's a good question, you stopped me on that one. Who initiated this request? So...
And then I would say, why now?
Yeah, I would, I believe that the city council initiated it, because in our work plan for 20, in the staff work plan for 2016, was a charge to bring redevelopment and reinvestment to Wooddale and Valley View. Also in that work plan was a charge to get something happening in Grandview, at the public worksite, so it dates back a couple years. The reason that we're doing it tonight, as opposed to six months from now, is that with the Valley View Road parcel, after spending about a year in negotiations with developers, we believe we're at a point where we've got a workable deal that can come forward. So in order to have that conversation, even to get consent, to grant consent for a private developer to pitch a proposal to this body, when they don't even have control over it, we have to consent. So again, this is kind of the first step, so they can bring their plan to you. My understanding is that they've had at least one neighborhood meeting recently, they'd like to get another one scheduled in the next month, and they want to get submitted and start going through the process, so that's why this is a timely topic.
And would it still be correct to call those properties city-owned, if once it transfers to the HRA?
So the technical term would be HRA-owned at that point. The HRA is a subsidiary agency to the city, so maybe we're like twins in a way, we're different, but we're so connected, we're kind of the same, but technically per law, we're two separate taxing agencies that are connected at the hip.
Okay, and the HRA right now, the members of the HRA are the members of our city council, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I, you know, I had to do a little, just for my own background, so I went to the Minnesota statutes, because I think that we are, that was cited here, Minnesota statute 462 requires that the planning commission render an opinion regarding the compliance of, with the comp plan for the ownership of these properties. Okay, so the purpose of a HRA, and I have some questions to follow for that, is, one, to provide a sufficient supply of adequate, safe, and sanitary dwellings in order to protect the health, safety, morals, and welfare of the citizens of the state. Number two, to clear and redevelop blighted areas. Three, to perform those duties according to comprehensive plans. Four, to remedy the shortage of housing for low and moderate income residents, and to redevelop blighted areas in situations in which private enterprise would not act without government participation or subsidies. And five, in cities of the first class, to provide housing for persons of all incomes. So is it correct to assume that our Edina HRA also acts in that same capacity?
So the Minnesota...
Or do we have a slightly different... What I'm trying to get at is, is when we do these parcels, does it limit us to doing these, just these things, rather than, say, a nice shopping center, or, you know, an office building? Because that, that doesn't seem to be covered here under Housing Redevelopment Authorities, it's just blighted areas, ensure there's safe housing, make sure there's different kinds of housing, affordable housing and things.
So in response to your question, the Minnesota statute applies to Edina just like it does to St. Louis Park and Eden Prairie and every other community. We are, Edina is not a Class 1 community, that's Minneapolis and St. Paul, so that particular phrase is not applicable to us, but everything else is.
Okay.
And those charges or those responsibilities, we believe are worded broadly enough, where they can encompass lots of different types of outcomes, and lots of different types of projects. For example, when the parcel on Valley View Road was acquired, it was part of a TIF district that was designated to bring new development to that area. In 2013, the old public worksite was found to meet the substandard tests, or what some people call the blighted test, for that property. So just by those two facts alone, these properties would qualify for involvement with the HRA.
Okay. You had said that the city, right now, if they were to put it up for sale, would have to accept the highest bid. Is the city actually obligated to take that bid, or could they decline and say, no, we want to take the lower bid? Or are you saying, no, they'd have to take the highest bid, they have to?
So I would refer that to our city attorney for the full nuance of how to apply that state law, but in general, the primer I was given from our attorney was essentially, you take the highest bid, or you take no bids.
Okay.
Which, it's kind of an all or nothing, which my fear is, if that's our option, we might not get what we want as a community.
So I guess I'm just still trying to determine, you know, what exactly the HRA, and it's probably similar to what Commissioner Bennett is trying to search out, is to understand the difference in how that really conveys any advantage. My concern is that, obviously, there's always been this issue, and it's, again, it's, it came out most prominently with the Grandview property, in that when there is a city-owned property, it's seen as public property, and there is a sentiment among some residents that city-owned property should not be sold, that it is, it belongs to all the residents, and therefore, it is, it should go towards the benefit of the residents. However, I can understand that the HRA is looking at projects that are a mix of private and public development, and that's where it gets a little fuzzy, it has to be, obviously, if it was first and foremost a parcel that belonged to the city, it would seem that the city should benefit the most from the sale of that, or the collaboration with the developer. And sometimes I think that's the area that, that there's always a mix of emotions about whether that really was true in the end. So that's what I'm after, is just trying to really understand the reasons for it being brought forth now, and the initiation of it, the timing of it. This one graphic you have on the screen, and that's probably my last question, is, you are asking just for those last two parcels up in the corner, is that right? That's what we're, is that what it's saying, or is it saying the whole thing?
No, this resolution encompasses the whole property, it consists of three separate tax parcels, and all three are shown here.
Okay, and right now, they're all, it's all city property?
Correct.
And you would like to have that transferred to the HRA?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? Well, I have a question slash comment, and I might have a comment later or two, but I have a question slash comment. And this probably applies to the second matter, if we haven't got into yet, the TIF approval. So as I understand it, the scope of our charge tonight is to render an opinion that transfer of these properties to the HRA complies with the comprehensive plan. And the proposed resolution basically is a declaratory statement that the transfer complies with the comprehensive plan. But when I read the memo, I see a lot of reasoning about why it's a good idea to do the transfer, and the discussion has fairly well centered around why it's a good idea, although I'm, I guess I'll add my later comment now, I'm still struggling as to why it's a good idea, so we don't have to take the highest bid. I'm kind of missing that one, and that's not really the, that's probably above my pay grade on this. But what I don't see in the memo is something that says, "Transfer to the, of the subject properties to the HRA complies with the comprehensive plan if," or the requirements for a transfer to the HRA to comply with the comprehensive plan are 1, 2, and 3. I'm kind of, I don't see it, I see that we're supposed, that's the issue, and then I see a lot of good reasons to do the transfer, and then I see a resolution certifying compliance, but I don't see anything tying it together that says, here's the information the planning commission needs to consider to determine whether or not it complies. So that's why I think we're kind of struggling right now to say, oh, is this a good idea or not, which really probably isn't the scope of our commission. And so with that, I'll ask the question, because I, this isn't my expertise, so I'm going to toss it back, am I missing something? Is there, is there guidance about a transfer from the city to the HRA complies with the comprehensive plan if the following things are met, that we can tie to and say, yep, this hits that? So I'll ask if that's here, if that's in the proposal, or if it's elsewhere that we should know about it.
Sure. So in my memo, what I tried to do was summarize the status of the property, what's there today, what they're about, the size, guided use, those types of things, and then I described the anticipated redevelopment. So for example, this Valley View Road parcel, I had mentioned, we've been working with a couple different developers for about a year now, trying to get a project that complies with a small area plan. Individually, they could not comply with a small area plan. We want them to comply with a small area plan, that's the comp plan. We believe that by being able to negotiate with these parties that said they work together, we can come up with a project that successfully meets the conditions of the small area plan. So that's the path on the Valley View Road. On the Eden Avenue parcel, very similar, through the last several years, we've talked so much about following the guidance established in the Grandview Framework. And while that's not officially a part of our comprehensive plan, there's been so much time, energy, and passion poured into that, we have to go in that direction. With this, with the public worksite, you know, we're still unclear, what is the final direction? Is it all public? Is it all private? Is it a mixture of which? Which one has 51%, which one has 49%? None of those questions have been answered, but we fully intend to move forward in that direction. So the very last sentence of the memo makes a statement in about as strongly a condition as I can reference, without having a full developer standing here next to me. In conclusion, staff finds no conflict with the transfer of ownership, and recommend that the planning commission approve the resolution.
So Bill, are you saying that transfer from the city to the HRA complies with the comprehensive plan if the proposed uses comply with the comprehensive plan?
That's correct.
See, that's why, okay, Carrie, help me out.
Let me take a shot here, so the first, the first of the two, the Valley View site and the Eden site, you look at the graphics, they're vacant parcels, there's nothing there. So we really don't have a specific project that, for you to look at and say, okay, this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. In all likelihood, when those developments come in, they may need an amendment to the comprehensive plan, but you will have review authority over that. As they sit today, they're in compliance, it's vacant property, zoned appropriately, there are a couple of actually industrial uses, but the zoning is appropriate for it, so you're not reviewing a specific development, but knowing in... So you're not reviewing a specific development, but knowing in the future, you will have the ability to, well, it's either going, the project is going to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, or an amendment to the comprehensive plan is requested. With the second project, item 7B, we do have a specific plan, the Market Street project. That's what you're asked to consider. Is that plan consistent with our comprehensive plan?
Market Street? Oh, that's part of Market Street?
Yes. We haven't talked about it yet, but I'm-
The next agenda.
Yeah, so-
Right.
So, I, I, I read, and maybe, 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 so I, I'm looking at subdivision 2 of this relevant statute, and, and, and maybe the issue is that this complies because transfer from the city to the HRA doesn't change the source of ownership? I don't know how we can consider a transfer, any transfer, even the Market Street or any non-transfer. I'm kind of confused. But if you tell me that, and maybe this is a city attorney thing, if you tell me that the planning commission can certify that the transfer from the city to the HRA either complies with or does not violate the comprehensive plan because essentially the same municipal ownership is held, that makes sense to me. But otherwise, I'm kind of confused about what we're, what we're doing here as I, as I go through this, on, on, on this matter.
Could we add a condition that-
Let me add one other thing to maybe make it more in context. Sometimes we get along too well in Edina. So there's some communities where the HRA is different than the city council, they have different goals, and oftentimes conflicting goals. I, I don't follow all local matters, but it seems to me that in the last couple of years, there was some kind of kerfluffle in the city of Minneapolis, where the Minneapolis Park Board wanted to do one thing, the Minneapolis City Council wanted to do something different, and they were in direct conflict. And that happens a lot. I mean, that's right, we're all people, sometimes you don't always agree. So when they write the Minnesota statutes, they put safeguards in there to make sure that if there's a, a change or a transfer, that you're not doing something to spite the other person, that you're not doing something, not the agency, but you're not doing something where, you know, one group of elected officials might be able to do an endgame around a different set of folks. In this particular case in Edina, the five people that sit on our HRA are the same five people that sit on the city council. So we rarely have, maybe we did 40 years ago when they, when there were some different faces around, but today, it's the same folks looking at the same vision of Edina's statement, having the same community meetings, looking at the same comprehensive plan. So that's also one of the key reasons, and I guess I just took that as an assumption, why I don't see any conflict with changing ownership interest in these parcels, because the folks that would choose any project, whether it's public, whether it's private, whether it's office, whether it's residential, whatever the project might be, it's the same set of folks looking at the same comp plan, looking at the same zoning code, looking at the same community interests.
Okay, so you're, so you're saying that really, it's just because it's, it's just transferred from one part of the city to another part of the city, that's why we should approve it, instead of considering the other uses or the, or the good reasons for doing so? So that's the third reason in the last half hour for doing the proposal. I'm okay with that. Commissioner Hobbs?
I think, I think, I appreciate that Bill did, you know, all the work to kind of describe what may happen at these sites, but that really isn't germane to what we're here to talk about. It really is just whether or not the transfer ownership from the city to their HRA is conformed with the comprehensive plan. We don't know what's going to happen in this site. So I appreciate all the background, but I do think that is maybe confused folks as to what we're talking about, because really, we're talking about the transfer title, we don't know what's going to happen, and all that stuff's going to come back to us per whatever anybody wants to propose on whatever happens here.
Commissioner Lee?
All right, so now I have more of a question. Are we, are you truly asking the, the planning commission to, to adopt a resolution approving the transfer of the property? Or are you asking us to actually find that the subject properties being transferred are in compliance with the comp plan? Do you, do you have to require the planning commission to approve the transfer, or are we just actually making sure that the properties are in compliance with the comp plan?
Yeah, great question. So, so the planning commission does not have the authority to sell city property, or to transfer it, or anything of a, of a financial nature. So the, the, the true heart of this resol, of this resolution is in the "Whereas Clause", "Now therefore be it resolved that the planning commission finds that the transfer of the property is in compliance with the comprehensive plan." That's the statement that is actually being uttered by this group-
May I make a suggestion on the rewording of that, then? And I think we did this last time, that, that you change it to, "The planning commission finds that the subject property being transferred to the Edina HRA is in compliance with the comprehensive plan."
Yeah, that's not what the statute requires, though. See, what the statute requires is, "After comprehensive plan has been filed, no publicly-owned interest in real property within the municipality shall be acquired or disposed of, nor shall any capital improvement be obtained..." "...until after the planning agency has reviewed the proposed acquisition, disposal, or capital improvement, and reported in writing to the governing body its findings as to compliance of the proposed acquisition, disposal, or improvement with the comprehensive municipal plan."
But the comp plan only deals with the land use, it doesn't talk about procedures of transferring-
That, that's why we get, that's why, that's why we, it's kind of, I suspect, and I'm not a statute expert, it's Minnesota statute. I suspect what happened is, when they created this statute, they weren't, this was written in 1965. I suspect they were not thinking that there were going to be various municipal agencies involved, and there'd be a transfer from the right hand to the left hand. And so this is kind of a, a round, a square peg in a, in a round hole. This is just totally me guessing, I hope there's nobody quoting me to their law professors on this. But I, I think, but the, the city now feels like they have to follow the formality of having planning commission approval of the transfer. And, and the statute was intended to deal with uses post-transfer, and that's why we're kind of swimming around in this usage area. Commissioner Hobbs, I see you shaking, I know you've done a lot-
Yeah, and, and, and that's just it, I think you're, you're hitting kind of what the issue is, in terms of what the, the statute says. I mean, the only act before us is the transfer of ownership. That's it. So that's what we're saying, "Yep, that transfer ownership," in theory, we're saying, "That transfer ownership is in compliance with the comprehensive plan."
Yeah.
That's all, that's all, we're, we're, there's nothing else that we're really voting on in this, we're just, it's just that act.
And that would make sense, because we're expecting that this property will be something that the city will not just turn around and sell, but will be active with the developers, which might cause some negotiation, which might mean they're not getting the absolute highest price, which means it's good that the HSA has it versus the city, which is why the whole thing makes sense, because we know it's part of comprehensive plan.
All-
Right?
I don't know.
Yeah, although, all, all we're talking about, that may all exactly be a very rational reason-
That's why, that's why we have to do it, and that's why it's part of the comprehensive plan.
I think the whys are way beyond the planning commission, though. I think that's what's, are we, are we in agreement here?
Yeah, we're, we're just voting on the transfer of ownership.
I mean, that's why they're transferring it, and that's why it's part of the comprehensive plan.
Many of us probably even disagree with you about the whys, but that's beyond our scope, so. Do you agree, Bill? I think the only thing we're supposed to do is just say, "Transfer from city pocket A to city pocket B is okay under the comprehensive plan."
That's the only thing that's being requested, yes. It's a simple statement.
Is there any further questions for Bill? Or any, any further discussion on the, on the planning commission? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the recommendation that this, the resolution, that this is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, the transfer of the subject properties from the city to the HRA.
I have, I have one small amendment, and that is, unfortunately to you, Bill, the motion tonight has Joanne Olson as the chair. If you'd like it signed this evening, I suppose, Carrie, you know, need me to sign it? Or if you don't need it signed this evening, Joanne will be available.
It doesn't have to be signed tonight.
Okay.
There's, there's not that degree of urgency.
Okay, so we have a motion, second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay, that passes. Bill, same thing for the TIF, maybe, can you get right to the heart of it?
Yes.
What are the-
Happy to.
What's the, what's the, the meat? "A TIF district complies with the comprehensive plan if..." I don't think we need to get into all the good reasons for doing a TIF necessarily, but a TIF plan complies with the comprehensive plan if...
You're only saying that the plans that are associated with the TIF, it's just the plans are consistent with the comprehensive plan, so it doesn't have anything to do with the TIF agreement. It's just, are the plans-
The plans.
-that you all approved or recommended approval of?
Okay, so that's, this is Market Street?
This is Market Street.
Because we've done it in the opposite before, we, we've approved TIFs in the absence of plans.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so this one's different tonight?
Different example, same, same process. So in, in this case, once again, in order for the city to move forward, the HRA to move forward with some redevelopment activities, state law requires that we, that we consult with the planning commission as a double check to make sure that the HRA is doing what the city council wants to do, which in theory should be consistent with what the planning commission recommends. So to, to the heart of the matter, state law is also very clear that the, the role of the planning commission is not, is not to opine or debate tax increment financing, and is that the best tool, the worst tool, the right tool, the wrong tool, but just to look at the plan. So in the document that we sent, there is Appendix A, and, where is it? Appendix A. And I provided the shortcut of the memo, in hopes that you wouldn't have to read through the whole darn document. But Appendix A just describes the project that is anticipated. And that project is the Market Street or the Edina Collaborative Project. So what the resolution regarding the 50th and France 2 TIF district involves is consideration, and we're, we're recommending a finding of the planning commission, that if the city moves forward and creates this TIF redevelopment plan, the project that's anticipated, which in this case is a real project, is consistent with our comprehensive plan. And as, as substantiation for that, I just made reference to the date that it was approved, but the developer that we've been working with has secured planning commission approval on April 5th, they've secured city council approval on April 18th, they're up for final approvals next week on June 20th. The, that, that plan is what's embodied in this TIF district. So when it comes right to the heart of the matter, and what the role of this body is, is to ask whether or not that plan that you've already approved is consistent with what you approved.
Are there any questions from Mr. Newdorfs? And any discussion? Any motions?
I move to... How do I, how do we word this? To, to confirm that TIF is appropriate for the 49th, for the Market Street project? Is that how we say that?
The plans that are associated in the TIF agreement are consistent with the comprehensive plan.
That's it. What he said.
Aye.
Any nays?
Great, thank you.
Well, that brings us to correspondence and petitions. Anybody have any correspondence and petitions to bring up this evening? So unfortunately for you, I, I have one or two. First of all, I received a letter in my packet from a citizen. Looking around the table earlier this evening, I saw a handful of you, but I understand that not everyone received a letter. Is that correct? Did everyone get a letter? Everyone, okay, because Joanne told me she hadn't, okay. So everyone got a letter, so, and then second, well, that's the, that's the only correspondence and petitions I have. Chair and member comments? Any chair and member comments? Commissioner Lee?
This is just something I wanted to bring forth now that we're embarking on the 44th and France Small Area Plan, and soon to be followed by 50th and France, and maybe 70th and Cahill. I think that it, it's important that we try to be consistent how we run all these small area plans, particularly the ones that are going to be tied to our comp plan. So it would stretch, hopefully, all the way from the beginning of the selection of the work group, as well as a scheduling of the meetings, and the recording of the meeting minutes, and making them public. A schedule, establishing a schedule is, is critical. I, my understanding is that we are, I wouldn't say short on time, but we had, the schedule got obviously pushed back a little bit due to some of our changes in the beginning with our public meetings. So having said that, I just hope that we can establish a process that when we, when we do select people for the work group, that, that there is agreement how, how their applications are reviewed, and obviously, we will look for balance. We want to make sure, obviously, that if there's a standing neighborhood association, that clearly that somehow we find them or identify them through their application and make sure that they are represented on that work group, as well as a good balance between residential interests, business interests, developer interests. And again, that would be another play, place where we, I'm not quite sure whether the current application does or does not leave a spot for someone to sort of self-identify for those things. On top of that, meeting minutes should always be taken, and then obviously posted as soon as possible for public review. We want to keep that process as transparent as possible, I think that's how our, our consultants are handling it right now from their end. I know that we're still getting a lot of things set up, but in general, I find that the city website is pretty good, as long as you type in something, you know, "44th and France notes." I did get some feedback, and I know that there was just a little rocky start to the 44th and France, so, but I, I know that you guys have, have moved ahead, and that is great, and the schedule was a little bit tight, perhaps, on that scheduling of the next meeting, but I understand that consultants are, almost have to, to stay, stick with that schedule, otherwise, we're not going to get through all these small area plans exactly. So it is what it is, and I hope that those on the public who are interested in following this, stay tuned and can find the information. Obviously, we're all open to a phone call at any time, and I would say the same thing, I, I would like to be kept abreast of what's happening as well, so I wouldn't expect you to be reporting, but if I can go grab the notes myself without having to wait for somebody to distribute it to me, that's great, I'll just make sure I go and look for it, so, just a couple reminders.
Thank you for the comment. You know, with that, Commissioner Bennett, Commissioner Barubi, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, definitely. I, we've been talking about this a lot, and when the council checked in, I think, looking back, I think we would do all this differently. Where we talked about doing a retreat or something, I think that should have been fundamental to beginning the comp plan as a kickoff, us getting united on the front of what our vision is together, and what's the council's vision and the community's for that comp plan document, have a simple mission statement, a north star to kind of strive for, so that we could easily communicate that into the groups, because it was, I'd say, a lot of the participants still don't quite understand how everything's going to fit in, nor do they understand what their role specifically is. And that goes to my, another point, is what we would recommend, when you start your small area plan, to really focus on it being commissioner-led and working group-led versus consultant-led. There's a tendency to let them kind of just take the wheel and drive, but again, it's up to us to really push for that vision, since we kind of understand it the most, and really harness kind of the passion and, you know, the actual, you know, tangible understanding of that area of those community members. And so- And so we're meeting with the consultants tomorrow morning. Our next community meeting is the night after our next planning commission meeting. And so I urge any of you guys who are going to be the chairs of a group to come to that, to just kind of see what it could be like, and where you could improve yours, because we're kind of the guinea pig in this, and we're just reacting off of feedback live. So it's, you know, we've never done it, and it would have been nice to know some of these things, so we could have been proactive versus reactive.
Yeah.
So I mean, everything you said is everything we are trying to be about.
The other thing, too, is there really isn't a process for feedback. So this is the first I've heard that anybody wasn't happy with it. So I'd like to hear more specifics.
And I don't know how the end of the checking with council went, but it seemed, it seems that we should look to that bridging exercise to see what, was it the modes and nodes? What is the takeaway? And kind of keep that as like the thing to strive for in the small area plan, just to get some cohesion about what we're even talking about. So.
Commissioner Hobbs?
Yeah, and kind of in the same vein, I'll mention what's happening with the Southdale Work Group. And, you know, for, as you may know, I mean, we've been working for a couple of years now on the quote-unquote "small area plan" that is the whole Southdale area. And, you know, we've gone through phase one, phase two, and we had a presentation to the city council on June 7th, mostly just to kind of wrap up phase two and ask for the council's approval to move on to phase three. Phase two is really the culmination of the plan that you've all seen, the kind of artist rendition of what Southdale could be, as well as the principles which have been adopted by the city council and the planning commission. The next step really is to take those principles, and we really like emphasizing that those are meant to be principles. They're not meant to be rules, that somebody meets the principles, and they don't meet the principles. That almost seems impossible to us. The principle is to guide policy going forward, and that's really our next step. And I think when we last met, we definitely are cognizant of the other small area plans that are being done, and trying to get all these trains to the station at the same time in a way that's going to be cogent and coherent in terms of developing a comprehensive plan is going to be a little bit of a trick. But I think that's one thing that we're aware of with the Southdale group, is we actually sped up our clock a lot. We wanted that to go as fast as is reasonable to be able to get these policies in place, maybe to help even guide some of the other efforts, or kind of catch up to some of the efforts that may not be quite as complex just because of what's going on in Southdale, but will also help to guide how some of the other small area plans are coming together. So that's kind of the thought of the Southdale group. And I don't care if you wanted to add anything to that.
No, just other than, it does, it has to be much more than that. You know, it is a small area plan with all the other elements. That's obviously the key, but there's a lot more, too.
Right.
Yep.
So I think in the last meeting, we received a package which was a summary of Mike Schroeder's, that he put together a four-page. And then since then, Carrie had sent out a more of a collection of thoughts that the Southdale team put together that was submitted to the city council. I would encourage all of you to read it if you get a chance, there's, I thought, a lot of interesting stuff in there. I did want to follow up on Susan's comment, though, and Jimmy and Sheila, because, in my opinion, you guys really are, you're right, you're the guinea pigs, and we're going to learn from you. We're, you know, the next, in my opinion, the next small area plan's going to be 50th and France and 70th and Cahill, and they're probably going to have a lot more in common with what you're doing at 44th and France and what you're doing at Southdale in terms of process. And also, we're going to be using the same consultants, so we'll probably be able to leverage what you learn. So as one of the people leading, one of the next ones, thank you. I guess, you know, that's all. Are there other comments that people have? Carrie, I had a question about, I'm just kind of curious, my final thing is Estelle at the city council. I think that's just an interesting one. Maybe you can give us a quick summary of that discussion.
Sure. It did go to the council at their last meeting. And from the way I interpreted the council, they were pretty clear that they loved the project, but not necessarily for that site, given the height. So where the developer will go with that feedback, we'll see. But that was my takeaway.
Thank you. Is there anything else this evening? Thank you, Carrie. Carrie, do you have anything else? With that, is there a motion to close tonight's meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.